All rise. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Mr Chairman, I wish to clarify a procedural matter under the meeting's local law. Section 33, subsection four states that questions should be allocated to minority councillors on a pro rata basis. I've checked the questions for the last few weeks and I've had one in 10 questions and councillor Shree has had one in nine. Neither councillor Wines nor yourself has been allocating questions on a pro rata basis. So can you please explain to us upon which basis you are allocating questions and why it is not in accordance with subsection 33.4?
Thank you councillor Johnson. I'm aware of that provision and I will endeavour to make sure that you are allocated questions accordingly to the local law. Thank you very much. Are there any apologies?
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Atwood and councillor Cunningham will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Wines that councillors Cunningham and Landers be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Mr Chairman, you just said an apology to councillor Landers?
My apologies, did I? Atwood, my apologies. The councillors Cunningham and Atwood be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Any other apologies? No other apologies? Confirmation of the minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,658th meeting held on Tuesday the 24th of August 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,658th meeting of council held on the 24th of August 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have public participants today and councillor, Mr Shane Bourne and Ms Emma Dyson are joining us from the hybrid TV room in one of the committee rooms. Are you there, Mr Bourne and Ms Dyson?
I'm here, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr Bourne and Ms Dyson. You're speaking on behalf of Fishability Queensland. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity first and foremost. It's been approximately, last time I was here was in January 2019, in our infancy stages. And I'm proud to say we've come a very, very long way in that small time with a lot of support from Brisbane City Council. And we're here today to encourage that and just highlight a few areas where we need a bit more. Basically, what we're seeing at our events is a huge bombardment of people who are culturally disadvantaged, socially disadvantaged, don't have access to NDIS packages or support packages at all. And they've been left with very little support to be able to access socially inclusive opportunities. Our opportunities that we provide for people don't just stop at having a good day out fishing. They are contributing to economic growth substantially. We know we get about 30 NDIS for workers at each event. Some of them are earning $57.10 an hour at our free events, which is fabulous. Over the course of 40 events, 30 workers, this equates to $342,000. So we would like to highlight the areas that you may not be seeing. We're seeing pathways to employment through our programs and heaps of capacity building. We're also seeing a very good connection with our first people and some very good opportunities to develop some traditional fishing programs which have nothing to do with NDIS. So we'll need the full community support for that. We want to see support for people in the Brisbane City Council area that do fall under that umbrella of having a lived experience of cultural disadvantage, first, most, foremost, and also financial and aged care participants with disabilities. That's our really big area of concern for what we're seeing. But I'm going to introduce Shane, who is now the president of Fishability Queensland. Shane has come from participants' status and he's been dedicated and committed and now he is, he became a board member and now the advocate for Fishability Queensland. So I'd like to introduce Shane and if you want to say a few words.
Afternoon, Mr Chairman, Lord Mayor and councillors. First of all, thanks for having us this afternoon. I'll just tell you a quick, little bit about my story. It's probably more powerful than just sitting here trying to stick this to you. Fishability Queensland saved my life, that can't be understated in any way. Before I came across Fishability Queensland, I was extremely suicidal, really bad depression I had had for the better part of 20 years and was just looking for, I guess, one last ditch to grab onto something and start to meet some new people. Found Fishability Queensland on Facebook and yeah, it went out to my first event and it sort of helped me back. I guess I identified the fact that basically what we do is we change people's lives. I was extremely socially isolated before I came across Fishability Queensland, spent all day, every day lying in bed. And I'm now on the NDIS. You know, we have another couple of participants on the NDIS. Once Covid hit, we sort of needed to change scope, not by choice but by need and had to sort of tap into some people that are on the NDIS. Again, it's their choice to contribute to Fishability Queensland via their NDIS stuff. But there's a lot of other organisations out there that provide a very similar, if not identical, service to what we provide. However, if you don't have any money, you're not welcome. Fishability Queensland put on many low cost and free events with our community fish-offs, wire support from the government and other funding bodies that we have. Yeah, so I guess my whole want to come and talk to you guys about is the fact that we are inclusive of everybody. You know, if you don't have money, you're still welcome to come. You know, there's been many occasions where we've had on our boat trips, we had one or two NDIS participants and there's about three or four people out there that don't have funding. Yeah, so basically we just need a bit more support to help keep throwing our community events and our free events because it's, as someone that's benefited from it and grown so much, it's, I personally see it as unfair that if you don't have any money, you don't really have access to something that people with money do have access to.
Mr Bourne, I'm sorry, your time is up. Sorry to interrupt you, but you will be responded to by either the Lord Mayor or councillor Howard. Councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. And Emma and Shane, thank you very much for presenting to council. I will come and visit you in your, in the committee room at the end of, at the end of this session. Can I just say that it's stories such as yours, Shane, that makes all of the difference to we councillors when we hear that some of the work that you're doing for the community and we're very much about how we can continue to assist you with that. And I know that you have been the recipient of the community benefits funds from some of the funds through councillor Cork and through councillor Atwood and councillor Shree. And I want to thank those councillors for supporting you through the Lord Mayor's community fund. It's a fund that the Lord Mayor allows up to $35,000 worth of funding per council ward and we know that the benefit to that is enormous to the groups that benefit from that. Can I just say that the inclusion that you talk about is a very important aspect of what council is all about and my community development officers would be very interested in talking to you about the programs that you do and how we can best get those messages out to some of our other wards. I was very interested to hear also about your pathways to employment, the capacity building and importantly about your work with perhaps some of our First Nations. And we understand that all of those are so important to community and so important to the work that you're doing. So Shane, I really want to thank you for your personal story and for us to really understand the isolation and how important it is to have these sorts of programs that are there to support to you and also to allow councillors to be aware of the programs so that we can reach out to you and to help some of our residents that may be in similar situations. So thank you again for sharing your stories with us here today and I encourage you to keep up the good work and I encourage all of the councillors to get on board and to listen to your stories and I'll be up to visit you in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howard. Thank you, Mr Bourne and Ms Dyson for coming in today. It's a great story that you have to tell and I'm sure we'd be happy to continue to hear about your work. Councillors, we do have another speaker today, Professor Victor Ferris, who would like to address the chamber on traffic conditions on Dornoch Terrace in Highgate Hill. Professor Ferris, please come to the microphone. Thank you, you have five minutes.
Mr Chairman, Lord Mayor, councillors, thank you for this opportunity to address council on a matter of concern of the residents of Dornoch Terrace, Hill End and Highgate Hill. Dornoch Terrace is 1.3 kilometres long and runs from Gladstone Road at the top of the hill to Hardgrave Road. Specifically, I address suggested changes to the phasing of traffic signals at the Dornoch Terrace Gladstone Road intersection, which I raised in writing to council in March. I have lived in Dornoch Terrace for most of my life, so I've been able to observe changes to traffic flows over more than two generations and their impact upon residents. I also know this intersection particularly well. We have built our offices there in 1987 and are still there. Long gone are the days when we actually played tennis on Dornoch Terrace on the centre strip. The gravel shelters were out. But with the massive gentrification of West End, most particularly the barely controlled intensification of residential growth along the Montague Road Riverside Drive axis, actually Riverside Drive is not a lawful road, providing, this has demonstrated that Dornoch Terrace now has unplanned direct access to and from this high density residential precinct. I warned against this such a traffic outcome in a study which I did actually for council in the 1980s. The consequences to those living in Dornoch Terrace, apart from a noticeably declining amenity, are the rapidly deteriorating traffic conditions. It is becoming more and more difficult, at times barely possible, to enter or exit driveways or to walk across the street safely. As an improvement measure, I draw council's attention to suggest a consideration, an alteration to the phasing of traffic lights at the Dornoch Terrace Gladstone Road intersection as follows. For Gladstone Road, inbound traffic turning left into Dornoch Terrace, rather than this being virtually free flowing, that it be synchronized with the inbound Gladstone Road phasing. So when that light is green, traffic can turn left into Dornoch Terrace and when the light is red, traffic may not. This would create controlled interruptions to vehicular flows entering Dornoch Terrace, so allowing breaks in the traffic and creating opportunities, safer opportunities, for the length of Dornoch Terrace for residents to enter and exit their driveways and for pedestrians to cross. Incidentally, this phased interruption to traffic entry into Dornoch Terrace would also provide relief to the notorious Hampstead Road T-section at the lookout. The present phasing promotes rapid running via Hampstead Road, eliminating as it does several sets of signals. And by the way, a yet additional benefit of any rephasing would be provided to the many cyclists on the popular river loop whose safety down Dornoch Terrace would be improved. This suggested phasing change would have minor impact only upon the inbound Gladstone Road vehicular flows. There is spare capacity and there is sufficient queuing length and could be implemented at virtually no cost. So prior to closing, I advised that I was forwarded a council response some time ago and I provided a rejoinder, to be candid, I found the memorandum unnecessarily dismissive and I suggested that council provide this time a technically reliant amended response and have not heard anything since. So to conclude, I commend this suggestion for council's consideration, one which offers a significant community improvement at really no cost. The safety implications, not only for Dornoch Terrace residents but for others, are plainly evident. And as an afterword, when I was commissioned by the state government quite some time ago to design Brisbane's first public transport pocket map, I also reproduced a poster from 1910, when this intersection was altogether more gentle and far more genteel. May I leave a copy, Mr Chairman, for the Brisbane Museum?
Thank you, Professor Ferris. Your time is up. Councillor Wines, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I thank Professor Ferris for his time and coming in and I recognise his keen commitment to the inner southern suburbs and thank him and his family's efforts to make our city a better place. Can I make a few comments? Dornoch Terrace's district road with a posted speed of 50 kilometres an hour is a bi-directional road with a single lane in each direction. Vehicles larger than 14.5 tonnes or of gross vehicle mass and over are banned on Dornoch Terrace with some authorised vehicles accepted. The only standing authorisations is for refuse vehicles and buses. Traffic enters Dornoch Terrace from a left hand lane from Gladstone Road or a nearby service lane. There are approximately 6,500 vehicles a day turning left from Gladstone Road into Dornoch Terrace with 700 vehicles in the morning peak and 640 in the evening peak. During the peak period, you will sometimes see the River Loop cyclists using the service lane rather than the turn at the lights. The Department of Transport and Main Roads web crash for the period of six years up to the 28th of February 2021 has listed five crashes at the intersection of Gladstone, Dornoch and Gloucester with three requiring hospitalisations. A high level traffic modelling has been done on this intersection with the introduction of a ban, as requested by the professor, would increase travel by 12 seconds a day for that left turn, per trip, I should, excuse me, a 12 second delay for left turns from Gladstone into Dornoch, which would anticipate a doubling of the length of queuing in the morning peak. That queuing would lead to increased congestion through Gladstone Road and that would also, it is our view, that would also affect the bike lanes and the bus stops. That being said, Professor, I am more than happy to come on site and have a chat with you about the operation of the intersection at a time convenient to both of us in the near future.
Thank you councillor Wines. Thank you Professor Ferris. Councillor Johnston, please. Thank you for coming in today, Professor Ferris. We appear to have lost councillor Cook and I'm sure we're working hard to make sure she gets back on screen. Are there, question time, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, following the tragic death of baby Mia at Glendorman Park a few weeks ago, can you update the chamber on council's investigation and what we are doing to mitigate another tragic occurrence?
Lord Mayor? Thank you for the question and it is one that I no doubt has impacted on all of us, as it has for the wider community, to see the tragic accident that led to the death of baby Mia and the flow-on impacts across the community of that accident. At the time, I asked that, we needed to get to the bottom of the facts of exactly what happened. There was some inconsistencies in the information that we had been provided. It was not exactly clear from the information that we had been provided what had happened and the circumstances surrounding what had happened. And so at the time, I asked the CEO to order an investigation into what had happened, to get the facts of the circumstances but also to make sure that the questions were being asked about whether our procedures were followed and secondly, whether those procedures needed to be improved or could be improved. And so today, I have this report and I now table it in this chamber. This report was conducted by KPMG, so it was an external report, independent of council, that's yours. And the report goes through in detail what happened and also outlines the procedures and practices that council has in place when it comes to reports of swooping birds. What is clear is that our practices and procedures have long been based on keeping birds in their native habitat and the majority of response from council has been about warning the community of the presence of a swooping bird. And so that includes when we get reports of a swooping bird in a particular location, installing signs. In some cases, that may involve the fencing off or exclusion of a particular area during breeding season. And we do have the ability, where it comes to very extreme circumstances, to engage an expert to relocate a bird that is causing problems. I believe that the longstanding practices and procedures need to shift. I believe that people's safety must come first and I have ordered the CEO to make sure that our procedures and practices are updated, to put people first. Now, I understand that there will be people that will say, look, these are Australian native birds, they're doing what comes naturally and we should leave them alone. Now, we are accepting that swooping birds are a part of Australian life, there is no doubt about that. And I know that probably everyone in this chamber at some stage in their life has been swooped by an Australian bird, like a magpie. Having said that, we are aware that there are certain birds and a small number of birds that are particularly aggressive and that cause injuries. And so it's impossible to count the number of magpies across Brisbane, it's impossible to count the number of swooping birds because there's a number of species. But what we can do is deal with those particularly aggressive birds better. And so where a bird is causing injury, I want to make sure that council steps in and orders the independent experts that are licensed under the State Conservation Act to come in and take action. And if that involves relocating a bird, then that is what we must do to protect the public safety. And so this is a change to the longstanding practice, but I think it is the right change because it does put people first. I also want to see our signage upgraded. I'm aware, and this report indicates, that there are currently a range of different signs that are installed. I believe that that signage needs to be geared up to be more highly visible. Excuse me, Lord Mayor, point of order to you, councillor Cook?
Apologies for the interruption. Mr Chair, is that report able to be provided electronically to councillors?
Can we provide that? It's tabled, we'll make sure that all councillors get a copy of it.
Thank you.
Sorry, Lord Mayor. Thank you. The signage that is used, I believe, needs to be upgraded and enhanced. The various types of signs that are in place could use for some improvement. I believe that more highly visible signage, using a different combination of colours, making them really stand out, many of the signs are actually black and white at the moment. Using colours like yellow and red and making them more highly visible, I think, is an important step in making sure the community is aware. So we are changing our procedures and the reason we're changing them is to make sure something like this never happens again. It is something we have never seen happen in Brisbane before, it is something that has shocked us all, it is truly a tragic accident and we never want to see it happen again. The way that we go forward is by putting people first. Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Are there any other questions? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you recently increased the number of Living in Brisbane newsletters you're pumping out into Brisbane letterboxes. Nine or 10 editions were about enough last year, but now residents have to throw out 11 editions this year. Over your four-year term, you will be pumping out 21 million copies of Living in Brisbane. It's not only filling up residents' bins, it's costing them $6 million, all so you can advertise your face on the front cover and boost your own profile. We know that because having a photo on the front cover was requested by your office. Lord Mayor, it's clear what personal gain there is for you, but how does the community benefit from your face being on every copy of the Living in Brisbane newsletter?
Lord Mayor? When you've got no plans and no idea, you resort to smear, you resort to personal attacks, you resort to petty politics and that's exactly what we say, what we see week after week from this tired and out of touch and out of ideas opposition. An opposition that has contributed nothing to public debate and indeed an out of touch independent councillor as well, who really believes in attacking everyone else and not contributing anything of worthwhile and of value. Now, I'll tell you exactly why we've had to increase the number of Living Brisbane publications, because we are doing so much, we are delivering so much that we need to let the community know and it is their right to know and it is our responsibility to let them know. And I can understand why councillor Cassidy and his team would like to gag, would like to gag any kind of public information coming out from this council. I can understand that because he knows that every time the people at Brisbane open their letterbox and they read Living in Brisbane, they see the fantastic things that this council and this administration, the Shrima Council, is delivering on behalf of them. And they don't want people to see that. They don't want people to see that because Labour would like to keep people in the dark. Labour would like to keep people in the dark. I believe in throwing open the doors and letting the light in, letting people know exactly what we are doing on their behalf because I am proud of what we're doing because we're building a better Brisbane. Every week that goes by, we're building a better Brisbane, we're investing more, we're doing more. That's absolutely right that people should be informed about this. Now councillor Cassidy, in his very misleading way, has suggested that somehow the Lord Mayor's photo has only just recently appeared on Living in Brisbane. That's the implication of what he suggests, but apparently it was requested by my office. Well, news flash, it was actually requested by Lord Mayor Jim. Lord Mayor Jim. Lord Mayor Jim Surley. And so people like councillor Cumming and councillor Griffith sat here and they've been here for something like 25 years in councillor Cumming's case, 18 years in councillor Griffith's case, and they were quite happy to have Lord Jim on the front cover. They were quite happy. Yet now, councillor Johnston, it's apparently unacceptable. Do you see the hypocrisy there? Do you see the double standards? It sort of reminds me about the issue of allowances and pay that they have raised. Once again, what's good for the goose apparently is not good for the gander. And I won't say who the goose is or who the gander is, but ultimately, double standards from Labour, double standards here and it just masks their lack of ideas in anything to contribute towards the debate here. So yes, we will be informing people actively about what's going on in their community and what we're doing to build a better Brisbane, we will continue to do so and we believe it is right to do so. And certainly as the leader of the city, as the elected leader of the city, it has been a long-term tradition for more than 20 years, more than 20 years, maybe 25 years, to have the Lord Mayor introducing the Living in Brisbane newsletter. There's nothing new about that, but what is new is Labour's got nothing else to talk about, so they keep coming back to this. And I would finally point out that these other people that are quite happy to send out seven photos of themselves in their own newsletter, and apparently that's okay, but an introduction from the Lord Mayor, the leader of the city, in the Living in Brisbane is somehow not okay. Double standards, no ideas, simply negativity and criticism and really quite a shameful attempt to prevent the people of Brisbane finding out what is going on in their city, which I think is just shameful and disgraceful, Mr Chair. which I think is just shameful and disgraceful, Mr. Chair.
Further questions, councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my question is to the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, works are just about complete for the Chalk Street Park upgrade in my ward of Marchand. Can you outline the details of this exciting new local recreational park that was in part helped design by the local community?
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Hammond for the question. And as councillor Hammond well knows, you'll find no better friend to pass than the Shriner Council. And I'm excited to be working alongside the Lord Mayor in delivering the biggest ever investment in green space in the history of this city. And as councillor Hammond just mentioned, works are about to be completed on a brand new park for Chalk Street in Lutwich. Mr. Chair, the Shriner Council is focused on delivering for residents now and long into the future by carefully planning for new and upgraded parks in the city plan and local government infrastructure plan, because we want to protect our Brisbane lifestyle long into the future, and we know that as our city grows, we will need more green space, parks and outdoor spaces for local families to enjoy. Mr. Chair, the need for a new park in Lutwich was first identified as part of the planning process for the Lutwich Road Corridor Neighbourhood Plan, and in 2017, we began securing properties for the delivery of a new park in Chalk Street. This new park is not only a reflection of the commitment of this administration, the hard work of the local councillor, but also the many local residents that got on board to help design this new park. I know that the Lord Mayor and councillor Hammond are very excited to be opening the new Chalk Street Park in two weeks' time, so residents will finally be able to enjoy the park which they helped to design. I had the opportunity to go out to visit the park yesterday, and it is a fantastic open green space, and it was wonderful to see firsthand all of the wonderful facilities. And they included things like picnic shelters, there's a new playground with a shade sail and safety fencing for our littlies, beautiful new shade trees to separate the playground from the street, lots of open space for playing sports and kicking the ball around on the weekend, fitness equipment, there are two stations, a bike repair station, and there's also indented parking for Marita Street. This beautiful new park will also pay tribute to a local resident, Mrs. Vera Canali. Mrs. Canali was an integral member of the significant Italian community in the area, and I know councillor Hammond will speak more about the contribution of Mrs. Canali during the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report today, when we consider a petition to formally name the park Vera Canali Park. Vera Canali Park will join more than 2,100 parks across Brisbane that are enjoyed by residents every day of the year. Mr. Chair, Brisbane's green space is just one of the many things that makes Brisbane so special, and spending time outdoors is something that we love to do in this beautiful subtropical city of ours. It's why protecting and creating new green space was the first and highest priority on the Lord Mayor's list when he first became Lord Mayor two years ago, and it still is and continues to be as we get on with delivering on the Shriner Council's record investment in green space, including dozens of new parks and playgrounds. But we're not about to stop there, Chair, there is always more work to do. The Shriner Council continues to deliver more park upgrades as part of our suburban renewal programme, with five park upgrades currently underway, and I'm pleased to advise the chamber that construction is about to begin on 16 brand-new park projects next month. The Shriner Council is passionate about parkland, and no matter which part of Brisbane you live in, there is a new and improved park not far from you. The Lord Mayor has funded over $70 million in new and improved parks across the suburbs, and many of our projects are reaching important milestones, including the new park at Chalk Street. Mr. Chair, at Victoria Park, the Shriner Council is investing $83 million over four years to bring Brisbane's biggest new park to life. And even in these early months since the opening, it has been wonderful to see residents out and about enjoying this new park. A point made by the Lord Mayor often is that while other projects like the Botanic Gardens at Mount Cootha were closed for many years while works were completed, at Victoria Park we have made it open for the community to use from day one. The stunning views from Victoria Park to the CBD, framed by beautiful trees and green grassy slopes, will make it a top location for a family picnic this year. There will also be much to explore at Victoria Park even before work on delivering the vision gets underway, and I'm pleased to advise, the work's already underway with several bunkers already filled and topped with brand-new turf, and work continuing over the coming months to open up the space to the community even more. This is a visionary project, and the community is at the heart of the planning for this project. We've consulted with thousands of residents, and great to see so many residents getting involved in this historic project for our city. Mr. Chair, the Shriner Council is delivering for the residents of Brisbane, and whether you live in the north, south, east or west of the city, we are building better parks for you and your family to enjoy.
Thank you, councillor Davis, your time has expired, further questions, councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week councillor Cassidy raised the cost of your self-promotional Living in Brisbane newsletter. Over your four-year term, you'll print and distribute 21 million copies, costing Brisbane residents $6 million. That figure is in your budget, but last week, you seemed to think that was incorrect. So, Lord Mayor, if you claim your own budget is wrong, can you please tell residents how much you are exactly charging them to distribute, to make and distribute your Living in Brisbane newsletter?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, through you, Mr. Chair. Councillor Griffiths probably needs to pay more attention, because I explained very clearly last week. I explained that time and time again, we saw fake urgency motions come up about curbside collection in this chamber, and their genius funding strategy was to cancel Living in Brisbane.
Point of order.
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Yeah, firstly, there's no such thing as a fake urgency motion, but my point of order is one of relevance. The question was about the cost of Living in Brisbane, and if the $6 million wasn't right, what's the actual cost?
The Lord Mayor is addressing the question, Lord Mayor.
Why don't I just sit down and let councillor Johnston run the meeting? I think it'd all go much smoother for everyone if she just got to do all the talking and we were quiet, that would be better, wouldn't it? So, what we saw is time and time again, they moved what they believed to be urgency motions, the chamber thought otherwise, which were about bringing back curbside collection. And their, as I said, genius funding strategy was this. Curbside collection costs more than $6 million per year, per year, but to pay for that, they would take four years' worth of Living in Brisbane, give or take. How does that add up? So, they can't understand basic mathematics here and basic budgeting. So, that was simply my point last time, and that point stands. If they can't be trusted to come up with even the most basic of strategies, then you really cannot believe anything they say. And we see it time and time again, just putting out fake news, they've literally dedicated a whole website to fake news, which is just Labour Party propaganda, and they continue to peddle fake information, and they put forward fake figures, and I'm simply calling them out on it. But I did point out earlier that having a Lord Mayor on the front cover of a Brisbane City Council publication was not something that was new. And you may recognise this person here on the front cover of a publication called Inside Brisbane, and it is Lord Jim with a hard hat on, with a Hutchies, Hutchies hard hat on, actually. And the photo takes up pretty much the entire page. So, I won't be lectured by someone who was part of this administration, and that was you councillor Griffiths, because you were here! This is not, this is not a case of councillor Cassidy or councillor Cook or other newcomers not knowing, councillor Griffiths was here. He actually saw Lord Jim on the front cover of these publications, time and time and time again. And councillor Cumming saw it as well. So...
Councillors, please, both sides of the chamber, please.
And so, councillor Griffiths, really, the cost of Living in Brisbane, which is an important community newsletter, has a line item in the budget. Look it up, do the maths and stop trying to misrepresent the facts, it's in the budget. And I'll tell you what else is in the budget, the record investment in green space and parks, record investment in public transport that keeps going up and up, the record investment in suburban footpaths and the basics, and an incredible $90 million worth of investment in repairing and resurfacing roads across the city, and the record investment in supporting local business through our local buy policy, all these things are in the budget too. And guess what, we want to tell the community about them, and that's why it is important that Living in Brisbane goes across the community, so that people have the accountability, that we have the accountability of people knowing what we're doing on their behalf. That is the right thing to do, rather than Labour's attempt to gag any kind of information going out, to keep people in the dark like mushrooms, they would prefer that. They are so cynical that they simply want to stop us communicating with the residents of Brisbane that we represent, yet it is okay for them to do that in their wards. So, Mr. Chair, and councillor Griffiths, through you, Mr. Chair, you should know better, you should know better, and you should be ashamed about that question.
Further questions, councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair for Infrastructure, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, council recently completed the Hoyland Street upgrade in my ward of Brackenridge. Can you outline how this upgrade has improved safety and network reliability for this growing area, while getting residents home quicker and safer?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and can I thank councillor Landers, both for the question and for her enthusiastic support of projects in her ward that do in fact get her residents home quicker and safer. The Brackenridge Ward is a site of another fantastic Shriner initiative, Shriner Council initiative, that will see her residents be able to use an upgraded Hoyland Street in Brackenridge. Now Hoyland Street, for those who don't know where it is, it's a major connection between Gimpy Road and Brackenridge Road, and Brackenridge Road will take you sort of to the gateway or to Stan Gate, depending on how you want to travel, or in the western direction to say Strathpine, both major intersections, both major traffic generators, and this piece of road, this particular length of road, was only two lanes, but the two pieces of road on the other side, that Brackenridge Road and the other side of Gimpy Road, were both four lanes. And the way they interacted with Hoyland Street was not, let's just call it suboptimal, right, suboptimal. So, the road upgrade itself was 900 metres long, and it was principally about expanding the two-lane road to become a four-lane road. Approximately 20,000 vehicles a day travelled on Hoyland Street between those two important links, and about somewhere between 6% and 8% of those vehicles were heavy vehicles each day. The project not only focused on managing the traffic, but it did also offer some pedestrian and cyclist improvements, which I'll discuss a little bit later on. The project itself was between Cluver Street, intersection at one end, and Brackenridge Road at the other. As I said, we will often do works to make sure that the capacity of the upgrade is markedly improved, but also safety. And that's one of the reasons that we did this work, because as I said earlier, the four lanes down to two created a merge, and at that merge, there was a number of accidents. Now, this morning's presentation heard that between the years 2013 and 2018, there were five accidents with two hospitalisations, and if we include the year 2019, there would have been seven accidents and three hospitalisations. Now, I trust that three hospitalisations is three too many for me, and I hope all councillors. And so that is one of the reasons that this work was done, to ensure that those mergers aren't there, that the traffic flows freely between those two major trunks, and that those 20,000 vehicle users can travel safely and comfortably through that area. The pedestrian section includes a number of upgrades, so there was the upgrade to the cycleway, and there's an upgrade to the pedestrian section, but also there's been, as part of this project, an upgrade to the two-phase traffic signal protections at Hoyland Street at the existing left-slip lanes at Cluver Street. And these will mean that those pedestrians who move through, as I said, what was a very, very busy road intersection, will now have pedestrian-lit protection to move around this area. The other upgrades as part of this project, council has also installed approximately 800 metres of guardrail and upgraded the existing sodium lights to new LED lights. The council, I'm sure, would be interested to know that the project was delivered five months early, with operations taking, the completion of the project the 9th of August, only some weeks ago, five months early, under budget, and it remains an excellent example of this council's commitment to improving roads, not only across all Brisbane, but in particular, the outer north, a growing, a needed part of the city, and also connects other things we'll hear about in the future, in Norris Road, for example. Councillor Landers and I will be discussing those sorts of things in the future. But this is but one more example, delivered under budget and with time to spare, that shows that the Shriner Council is getting its residents home sooner and safer, and quicker and safer. And it's also important for me to remind councillors at this point, and it was remiss of me not to bring it up earlier, can I also thank the federal government, who also made a substantial financial contribution to this project, to ensure that it did occur and that the costs were across a number of governments, and that I'd like to personally thank on behalf of both the city but also Brackenridge Ward residents, apologies for stealing your thunder on that, councillor Landers, to Mr. Luke Howard, who arranged for that. This project will make a material benefit to the people of outer north Brisbane, and I commend it to all councillors.
Thank you, councillor Wines, further questions, councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair, my question's to the mayor. In June 2018, the council administration released Brisbane's Future Blueprint, which included a clear and specific commitment that the council would amend City Plan 2014 to increase the minimum requirement for deep-planting trees in new developments from 10% to 15% of the site area. Graham Quake gave a written commitment to start this change within six months of the release of the blueprint. Over three years later, council has made many of the other changes promised in the Future Blueprint, which were favourable for private developers, such as height bonuses for new developments with green roofs, but the deep planting requirements in City Plan are still set at 10% of the development site area. Why has your administration not kept its promise to the people of Brisbane to increase the area for deep-planting trees in new developments from 10% to 15%?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Sri. Look, I don't accept or believe that the premise of your question is correct, but what I can confirm is that I will go back and provide some more information for you, based on what we're actually doing at the moment. But I can say this, people have been talking in recent times about, you know, what iconic structure or building might be constructed for the Olympics, and there's obviously been some proposals floated around, but what I can say is I want a whole lot of iconic structures created, not for the Olympics, but for actually people to live in. I want our buildings to be the greenest and the most sustainable buildings in the world. I want to see a city that has not only buildings that have a good Green Star rating and great sustainability, I want to see them covered with vegetation, I want to see new developments covered with vegetation, I want to see the greening up of development in Brisbane. And that is something that I can flag now, we will be moving on to further enhancing our planning regulations and our planning policies. We've done a great job in signalling to developers and requiring from developers various changes over the years. Now, councillor Sri mentioned one of them, and that was the ability to have green roofs and gardens and activation of rooftops. That is something that has happened only in recent years, and that is something that has happened deliberately and only because we have moved in and made this possible. So when you see all the fantastic green roofs and gardens around...
Point of order, councillor Sri.
Unrelevance, the question was about deep planting minimum areas, and whether the commitment to increase deep planting minimums from 10% to 15% will be kept. It's a very specific question about a very specific topic.
Lord Mayor, to the question.
Thank you, and I have actually addressed that, and I did that right up front, that I'll provide some further... that I'll provide some further information to councillor Sri. But I thought he would be interested to see my vision when it comes to the greening of development in our city. I really do want to see developments become not only more sustainable in terms of their energy use and water use and efficiency, but also literally in the greenery, on buildings, in buildings, as part of new developments. And whatever may have been proposed as part of the Future Brisbane Blueprint or the Brisbane Future Blueprint doesn't go far enough. We are going to go further. We are going to go significantly more down the road of encouraging this in our new developments. And there are some very simple reasons why. First of all, unlike many cities, particularly in Australia, we have a subtropical climate. And that climate is absolutely conducive to having things like rooftop gardens and facilities, but also to having more vegetation incorporated into new developments. We are not the type of climate that Sydney or Melbourne has, and in fact, many of the cities around the world. We are amongst the few subtropical cities that people would be aware of around the world. And so we're going to use that as a key point of advantage in the lead-up to the Olympics, so that when people come here in 2032, they see a city that is a green city, a garden city, a city that, like Singapore used its tropical climate, we're going to use our subtropical climate to really green up the city and green up new growth and development in our city. That's what I want to see. So whatever's in the Future Blueprint, I can tell you, doesn't go far enough. More needs to happen. And I have instructed, just in recent times, the CEO to develop new ways, new policies, new changes to actually achieve that outcome. So I look forward to communicating and discussing that with not only the chamber, but also the community, so that we can have a cleaner and greener Brisbane going forward.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions, councillor Timmy?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the fashionable Chair for Economic Development and the 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Games, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, last week Queensland Premier's Fashion Week took the runway to King George Square. Can you outline the economic benefit the Brisbane Fashion Festival brought to our city and how council will continue to support the festival in the future?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Timmy for the question and the compliment. The Fashion Festival is certainly Queensland's premier fashion event, and there is no better place for that to be held than in the state's capital, Brisbane. And yes, indeed, last week, the glitz and the glamour was back on showcase again for a festival which attracted over 1,500 people to City Hall and King George Square. There was a mild chill factor in the air on some of the later nights, but there was definitely no deterrent because the events were sellouts for every night as well. It is now in its 14th year, and the Fashion Festival has been proudly showcasing Brisbane's best when it comes to fashion and design. A mix of both local and international talent has graced our city over these years, and the quality of design continues to grow every time. But this year, it was all about BNE, the Brisbane Fashion Festival, bright and bold and beautiful on every night. The festival's director, Lindsay Bennett, said he was very heartened by Brisbane's strong support of the festival for over a decade. And he reported to us that tickets sold out in a record time this year, just in three days, which is a testament to how strong the reputation is of such a well-run event. And it is all about driving retail and fashion. And this has been the primary objective of the festival since it started. And it's been paying dividends for Brisbane's local designers since this time. Of course, since the festival began in 2006, we've seen a wide variety of designs, which some of we may ballcat now. We've seen a period of crop tops. We've seen some low-rise bootcut jeans that some ladies will remember. And of course, there was the, when baby doll dresses wear a formal attire, and I may have actually been guilty of that one, councillor Davis. But obviously, times have changed since then, and the items we have been talking about in the past are possibly in the Vinnie's bin or being recycled down at the World's Greatest Garage. But now, we are seeing more and more extravagant designs as well. So while the numbers are still being run on the festival's injection into the local economy, what I can tell you is that it definitely had a positive impact for small businesses. There were more than 50 local businesses supported as a direct result of the event. This includes everything from staging to lighting to catering, seamstresses and more. In addition, there were more than 100 models booked for the three nights who took to the 78-metre runway, which is the longest outdoor runway in the festival's history. A further total of 23 local Brisbane brands were showcased, some including white label Nova, which I have to say, Lady Mary's looks stunning in on Wednesday night, Shimani, Missy D, Will Vella, Benita Collective and Sasha Drake. And of course, some of our very popular Brisbane performers like Shepherd and Naomi Price, to make sure everybody got into the groove as well. There was more than 150 volunteers that worked on the festival. And they, of course, got invaluable experience in areas of backstage and front-of-house management, dresses and event management as well. The events like Brisbane Fashion Festival are important now more than ever for the recovery of our CBD. And some people may think it was just a frivolous night that we got to look at pretty people in pretty clothes. But it's also about supporting the CBD in a very chronic time for the economy as well. And there is no better way to do this than attracting people to the city through major events. If you were to look at the CBD on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday night last week, when there was no other major events on other than the Fashion Festival, the bars and restaurants were full around KGS. People were enjoying being out, of course. And why not, with the beautiful, stunning background of City Hall as a backdrop? And it was important that with the soon-to-be-released City Centre Master Plan, we do focus on this economic recovery of cities through the city, through initiatives like this. Brisbane's Economic Development Agency and council continue to invest in secure events to help boost our city's economy. And we've been doing it for many years now, and it's becoming more and more crucial. Due to the incredible success of this year's event, I am pleased to announce that BETA has recently engaged with the festival with a mind to continue sponsoring the event for years ahead. It spurs Brisbane's economic recovery. It gives people more to see and do in our city. And I can assure you, we will definitely be advertising it in Living in Brisbane.
Point of order, councillor Cook.
I had a question for the deputy mayor, but she's concluded, so I don't think I can ask her.
Well, if question time continues, you're entitled to ask a question. But that's up to your side. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is for Lord Mayor in this instance. Lord Mayor, support for Labour's job-creating, climate-change-busting and cost-saving initiative, FOGO, is gathering pace, with thousands of participants in Labour's Brisbane-wide survey indicating overwhelming support for Brisbane to Go FOGO. So why are you putting on the brakes on a full-scale rollout of food organics, garden organics here in Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Cassidy for another fake news question. Anyone would think from that question that Labour came up with the idea of FOGO, that it was their idea. Apparently, it's Labour's Job-Creating FOGO strategy, which actually neglects the simple point that the South East Queensland Council of Mayors have been working on this strategy for quite some time. And it's now progressively being rolled out. It also neglects another simple fact. And that is that the Labour state government up in George Street loves to come up with great targets, and they love a good new tax as well. And they come up with targets, but those targets are always for other people to achieve. And, you know, we saw an example just recently where we saw TransLink, for example, state government, decided arbitrarily that all new buses in the South East Queensland Bus Fleet by 2025 will be zero emission, right? Now, neglecting the fact that TransLink doesn't actually own any buses, they do not own a single bus. And in fact, these have to be delivered by others.
Relevance.
Sorry. Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Relevance, the question's about FOGO, not buses.
Lord Mayor. The question's about FOGO?
And so what we see here is another example of the state government saying, we have all these great targets when it comes to waste reduction and reducing waste to landfill. And by the way, we're going to whack a new tax on everyone called the landfill levy. And by the way, buried in the budget this year, we're going to secretly remove the subsidy to councils and generate an $88 bin tax on councils, which will then be passed on to ratepayers. But I am yet to be made aware of any state government support or funding for a FOGO system. There's not a single dollar that has been made available to Brisbane City Council from the state government, despite the fact that they are collecting hundreds of millions of dollars each year in the landfill levy. And so Labour's strategy is actually not a strategy at all. So as usual, the council of mayors comes together to deal with the state government's inadequacies. We did that with the Olympics. We led that charge. And we're leading the charge on FOGO as well. And we're leading the charge on waste minimisation and reducing waste to landfill. Why? Because the state government's solution to every problem is a new tax. Our solution to every problem is to actually get better outcomes. And that's what we're going to do. And so I'm pleased that we have funded in the budget this year a FOGO pilot programme, which will be a very exciting initiative for Brisbane and which will help the industry scale up for what comes next. Because at the moment, the ability to suddenly switch on every household in Brisbane with the FOGO system is just not there. The facilities are not there. The processing is not there. And in fact, as I said last, I think it was last week or the week before, we're happy to have a FOGO processing facility in the Deegan Ward, if councillor Cassidy would like that. It's going to be a smelly place. It's going to be a very smelly place. But... But... Order, please. He doesn't want one. It's quite clear he doesn't want one. The ultimate nimby. The ultimate nimby. He wants a FOGO system, but not in his area. So we'll see how that plays out. Look, one thing that we know, being involved in local government, is that when it comes to creating new facilities, particularly dealing with organics and otherwise known as putrescibles, they're called that for a reason, that there are some impacts that have to be managed here. Now, Labour has previously proposed, in order to fund this without any additional cost, a reduction in the weekly red-top bin service. That was their previous policy. How do you deliver FOGO without any additional cost to ratepayers? Oh, Labour's policy is to reduce the weekly red-top bin collection to fortnightly. And so I still haven't heard whether that's part of their policy or not. But the reality is, this needs to be done in a way that doesn't create an impost on households, but provides a new service which is thought through, planned through, and which the appropriate facilities exist.
Your time has expired, and that concludes question time for today. We move on to the consideration of committee reports. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report, the 23rd of August. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 23rd of August, 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 23rd of August, 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Yes, Mr. Chair. September marks Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And the Prostate Cancer Foundation of Australia challenges people to run 72 kilometres, not all in one go, but across the month of September, to raise funds for research and support services. Prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among Australian men, with one in six men diagnosed with prostate cancer before the age of 85. So that's nearly 17,000 people diagnosed with prostate cancer each year. And so to show our support for Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges, as well as the Reda Cliff Place sculptures, will be lit in blue tonight. Tomorrow night is National Wattle Day. And councillor Adam, and I see that you've got your Wattle badge on. Councillor Landers? Anyone else with their Wattle badge on? Mr. Chair.
And councillor Cumming as well.
Councillor Cumming did as well. And obviously, Wattle is Australia's national floral emblem and a strong symbol of Australia and Australia's patriotism as well, particularly during the world wars. And they also, it helps provide our national colours. So the green and gold actually come from Wattle. So that's something that we should all be proud of. And to acknowledge our national floral emblem on National Wattle Day, which is tomorrow, we're lighting up the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges and Tropical Dome in Mount Cotha and the Reda Cliff Place sculptures in green and yellow tomorrow evening. Friday through to Sunday, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridges, Tropical Dome at Mount Cotha and Reda Cliff Place sculptures will be lit in pink to celebrate Brisbane Festival. Now, Brisbane Festival last year was the only major cultural and arts festival in Australia to go ahead in the pandemic. And it's back, and they are very determined to make sure that they can go ahead again this year. Obviously, touch wood that nothing untoward or unexpected happens between now and then. But one of the things that was really exciting about last year's Brisbane Festival was street serenades, which saw the Brisbane Festival being brought to 190 suburbs across Brisbane, i.e. every suburb, with performances in each of the suburbs across our city and suburbs. The interesting thing about that, and one of the best things about it, it's an opportunity to support local artists. And we know that local artists have been doing it tough with the current COVID restrictions, with limitations on venues and venue capacity. There are many local artists that are doing it tough. And so Brisbane Festival will provide an opportunity for more than a thousand different local artists to be involved. And they'll help us with many facets of Brisbane Festival, including the street serenades across the city. We'll be lighting up the assets in pink to celebrate Brisbane Festival. It kicks off on the 3rd of September, which is this Friday, and runs to the 25th of September, culminating in the Sun Supper River Fire, which obviously we all hope goes ahead. The other thing that's happening on the 3rd of September is Australian National Flag Day. Now, I know that councillor Sri has a view on this, and he's been quite open about his view on this. But I actually, I love our Australian flag. I genuinely love this symbol of our nation. It's one of many symbols, but it is our premier official national symbol. And just as I love the City of Brisbane flag, but I can tell you, I love our Australian flag more. And I can tell you upfront, I never want to see that flag changed. Never want to see it changed. I am a life member of the Australian National Flag Association, and I will damn well celebrate the birthday of our flag, despite what councillor Sri says about it. We should do that. Now, you know, Australia is a different country to many around the world, but it is a big part of the Aussie ethos to wave the flag and see it as a symbol of our nation. You only have to see what happens in the Olympics and other major sporting events. People really do embrace the flag. And this is something that we should encourage because it is something that I think is a great national symbol. It is something that acknowledges our past history. It acknowledges our place in the world with the Southern Cross geographically. But also, having the stars, and particularly the Federation stars, is uniquely an Australian icon. But having those stars represents our future as well, as a bright nation with a bright future. So that's on the 3rd of September. Now, Mr. Chair, I will table now the Museum of Brisbane and their financial report, the annual financial report for the year ended the 30th of June. Now, recently, I tabled some other documents for council-controlled entities. And our requirement and our expectation is that once these statements are prepared, finalised and presented to us, then we will table those statements at the next meeting of council, which I am doing today. So they're available, the Museum of Brisbane statements. I can say that the Museum of Brisbane has done an incredible job, like everyone in difficult financial times, for a significant period. They've been impacted by the COVID pandemic, yet their budget continues to go from strength to strength. It is a surplus budget, which is a good thing.[1788.86] It is a surplus budget, which is a good thing, and it is something that we will continue to support through grants from council, to make sure that the fantastic history of our city is put on display, not just in terms of artefacts or art, but also the creativity of our people. And so whether that's the exhibitions like Storytellers that we've had just recently, or the whole breadth of other exhibitions that Museum of Brisbane puts on, they do a fantastic job. And I also want to thank the board in particular, and the chair of the board, former Lord Mayor Sally Ann Atkinson, for the enthusiasm which she continues to do the role. And I can tell you, I can certainly hope that I approach life with the vigour that she does at her stage in life, if I actually make it to her stage in life. So she is fantastic, an absolute dynamo, and a great asset for our city. Item A on the reports in front of us is the Brisbane Universal Housing Design Incentive Policy. This item relates to the incentive policy I introduced to encourage the creation of more universal housing that is built to a gold or platinum standard. And so for those of you who may not recall, this is about the simple changes that can be made in the construction of a new property or a new home that makes it accessible for people in all stages of their life. And so universal housing means that it should be accessible across all stages of life. So that includes people with a disability, but it also includes the elderly who may struggle in a house that is not designed for their particular needs. Now, retrofitting homes for this standard is a costly exercise, and so what we'd like to see is more homes being built with this in upfront. And just because a home is designed to a universal standard doesn't mean that people without special needs won't want to live there. It's actually, it will be accessible for anyone that lives in the home, not just those with a disability, or not just those who are elderly. And so our proposal here is two key changes. First of all, the extension of time for three years until the 30th of June 2024. One of the things that we require for this incentive is that the home has to be built and then certified to a gold or platinum standard, and so it's only after everything is done that they can then apply for this incentive. So that obviously takes time to roll through, we need to make sure that we signal to the industry that this is not coming to an end right now, that it's continuing because we want to see these houses continue to be built. So we'll see that extension of time. Additional criteria has been included to clarify that eligibility only applies if gold or platinum performance level certification has not been made mandatory under separate state or federal requirements. And so this is important. Obviously, we want to see over time the vast majority of new housing developments and new homes being built to a universal standard. It'll take a bit of time for us to get there, but at the point at which it becomes mandatory, well then, obviously, this incentive policy then becomes superseded if it's mandatory.
Your time has expired.
May for extension, seconded.
A motion's been received for an extension of time for the Lord Mayor by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Landers. All those in favours, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor, you have 10 minutes.
And certainly, we know that there will, there will come a time when state or federal requirements, you know, will more than likely require this to be a mandatory requirement. In the meantime, we're introducing an incentive to bring it on. It's, it's the carrot as opposed to the stick. If other people want to wield the stick, they are entitled to do so, but obviously we won't be paying an incentive if it is mandatory. When it comes to item B, it's the report of the Audit Committee, and in particular the meeting that was held on the 5th of August. Council continues to effectively manage its risks, and that is an ongoing process. Item C, the Stores Board submission for significant contracting plan for the supply and application of water for horticultural and industrial use. Water is obviously a critical requirement for council to continue delivering a clean, green and sustainable city, and we use, we require a supply of water for a range of applications, including landscaping, horticulture, dust suppression, civil construction, and also refilling water storage tanks at council sites where there hasn't been rain to fill those up. The majority of expenditure is for landscaping and horticulture, but also significant investment on construction works as well. This can be effectively facilitated through contractors, and council currently has a procurement arrangement in place, which is due to expire next year. The new procurement arrangement will be for initial term of three years, with options to extend for additional periods of up to four years and a maximum of seven years. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Any other speakers, please? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, just at the outset, could I ask clause B be taken, Seri Adam, for voting, please?
Yes.
Thank you. It's always interesting to hear the Lord Mayor talk about assets that are being lit up for days of significance for the community. This, we heard this week, it was the Wattle Day and National Flag Day and another interesting, I don't recall him last week, perhaps he did and I missed it, or certainly see our assets lit up purple for wear a purple day, it was 27th of August last week, which is a day that strives to foster supportive, safe and empowering communities for Rainbow Young People. I think it's an important one for us to make sure we mark as a, as a council. On clause A, the universal housing design incentive policy, we hope that there are genuine outcomes. We supported this last time and support the extension of this policy to make sure that housing is accessible to all those that are in our communities and seeking housing in our communities across a wide range of housing choices. But we want to make sure, and we'll certainly be seeking this further after today, evidence that this policy is working, how these, these discounts are delivering on that, and whether council is following up on those, those investments we're making on behalf of ratepayers in awarding discounts to private developers to actually help deliver universal housing design here in Brisbane. So we support the intent of the policy, and we'll be supporting the policy today, we want to make sure that we actually see those good outcomes for the community. Clause B, the Audit Committee report, as usual, there is nothing to see here because there is nothing to see here. We wish there was more to see here so we could see what oversight there is on decisions being made by this LMP administration, and here there's no transparency, no associated documents, no attachments for councillors to view and to know whether all decisions are being made properly and above board. We note that there are two committee members leaving, we don't know why, we assume their term may be up, or we don't know how they're being replaced and who they'll be replaced with. We, well yeah, we could, we could probably guess, we know that if you're a former LMP or Liberal Party mayor or LMP councillor, you often get, you often get, you often get jobs on boards and committees, we saw that with QUU recently, and South Bank recently, and other, other organisations that council wholly owns as well. So we certainly, you know, wish there was more transparency around all things on the Audit Committee, both the auditing that they are doing, the documents of which they are producing, but also who is on it and why they're on it, and the work they're doing on it. So given there is such a lack of transparency when it comes to auditing, and there've been such terrible outcomes on projects under this Lord Mayor's watch, we won't be supporting this item today as usual. We will be supporting clause C, the provision of water for horticultural and industrial uses.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the AP 275, the Brisbane Universal Housing Design Incentive Policy. In August 2019, council approved a procedure for the universal housing design incentive as part of a range of initiatives aimed at increasing the amount of housing delivered in Brisbane that caters to the accessibility needs of all residents across their lifetimes. This includes residents who are aging, have disability, are injured, or families with young children. And just an example of the really basic things that you might see through this policy are wider doorways. The costs associated with delivering housing stock to a level that responds to the various needs of residents can be significant and can act as a major deterrent in pursuing developments. In response, the incentive provides financial payments equal to 33% of the infrastructure charges paid for eligible developments that deliver universal housing. The original procedure required that development lawfully commence use and achieve gold or platinum performance level certification from a livable housing Australia Design Guideline Assessor, and this was between the 1st of July 2019 and the 30th of June 2021. The proposed policy has been created to combine the existing procedure and incentive into a single item. The new policy will retain the same development eligibility and funding criteria as the existing procedure, with the exception of the following key changes, and the Lord Mayor did touch upon this, but it's important to note. So the additional eligibility criteria have been included to clarify that eligibility only applies if gold or platinum performance level certification has not been made mandatory under separate state or federal requirements. Where a gold performance level of certification has been made mandatory, a platinum level of certification must be achieved to be eligible for the incentive. The purpose is to ensure eligibility is only granted to applicants delivering a higher standard than the mandatory performance levels under the state or federal requirements. To the councillor Cassidy's point earlier, there'll be no incentive paid unless certification is achieved. The second point was the extension of time. The original procedure was due to end on the 30th of June 2021. The proposed policy will extend the end date by three years to the 30th of June 2024. The extension will also apply to the related timeframes for making an application to council as well as to commence use and achieve certification. Mr Chair, this is an admirable policy and I commend it to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I just rise to speak briefly on item C, the Stores Board submission, significant contracting plan for water supply for horticultural and industrial use. Council allocates a bit over $12 million to fund this type of water, which is pretty essential in maintaining public spaces. One of the questions I've got is why we're not considering water tanks and water reticulation and reuse from our council buildings. Council's made minor steps to do some of that with solar power, and we should be doing it with water as well. But one of the things that Brisbane City Council has in great abundance is land, and I don't really understand why we're not looking at some strategically placed tanks rather than paying somebody a lot of money, a lot of ratepayers' money to, to get water for, you know, maintaining our public spaces. I think that this is something that we should be looking at, rather than simply paying others, and I am genuinely interested in whether or not major tanks have been considered on any council land, and whether or not council would consider doing that, and if they won't consider doing it, why was that excluded from consideration? I think building our own capacity as a council is important, I think it would provide water that we could probably give to community groups as well as, as well as for public use in land, because, you know, a lot of groups now have to purchase water as well from QUU, where before they used to be able to have access to it when we owned all of the water assets. So I think that we could be doing more here to create a sustainable sort of life cycle for our own organisation, but also we could support community groups. So I'm genuinely interested in why we're not considering building water tanks in, let's say, the four regions to start with, and then looking at using that water rather than spending a lot of money purchasing it from others.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I rise to speak briefly on item C, the Stores Board submission about significant contracting for supply and application of water for horticultural and industrial use. You'll be pleased to know, Chair, that that was precisely the question I asked the council officers about why would we be spending that kind of money on purchasing water, and their answers were very clear about why that is the case. I do want to also mention that we do actually have water storage tanks at our council sites, and the water we purchase is used to refill those counts, those water, sorry, those water storage tanks. The issue with using recycled water is a problem with regarding the spray of the water when you're dealing with people as well, so it's a workplace health and safety issue. It's obviously something that we're keen to address. I too don't particularly like the idea of spending a great deal of money on purchasing water. Unfortunately, it's something that is a necessary evil, so we will continue to do it to make sure that the...
Point of order to you, councillor Johnston.
Would councillor Marks take a question? Sure.
Councillor Marks, will you take a question?
Thank you. Thank you for your explanation, but why isn't council considering installing additional water tanks then, if we already have some and they're useful?
Councillor Marks.
To continue on with what I was saying, the council officers are absolutely looking at continue, at what we can do in addition to what we have currently, and that is something that has been investigated at the moment. We certainly want to make sure we have all the sustainable measures that we can, including extra water tanks and stuff off the roof and things like that, so it's definitely something that council officers are absolutely investigating, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Further speakers? Are there any further speakers? Oh, council three.
Thanks Chair. Just briefly on the universal housing initiative, I'm obviously on board with the principal and general thrust of this, I do just want to reiterate my previous comments in the chamber that I think some of these restrictions probably should be mandatory, and it sounds like even the mayor and the administration are sort of heading in that direction. This is perhaps one of the more kind of fundamental distinctions in terms of the strategy of how we achieve these outcomes. It seems that where the council administration identifies that there's a social benefit of encouraging a style of development, the general approach is one of proactive incentives, giving developers discounts on infrastructure charges, et cetera. My preference would be that if, if we believe a certain feature such as accessibility improvements is needed in, in new development, then we should be making it mandatory for some or all housing stock, depending on, on the elements in question. I think the fact that the council has shown a willingness in this context to at least offer incentives to encourage this kind of change is good, but it also highlights what the council is not doing, and it's a shame that the council administration is not introducing incentives to encourage the provision of genuinely affordable housing, for example, that's affordable for people on low incomes where rent is capped at a proportion of income, for example. So the council has these mechanisms and it's, it's showing a willingness to steer the market, so to speak, and encourage certain outcomes in terms of the kinds of housing stock that are delivered. And while, yeah, obviously I'd prefer that we take a stronger approach to this, even by this council administration's own logic, it would be appropriate and acceptable for the council to introduce incentives to encourage rent capped, the provision of some rent capped housing as part of new developments. The council is showing itself to have that mechanism, and it's disappointing that, that while the administration seems to acknowledge that there's a problem of rising homelessness and housing insecurity in Brisbane, there's been no tangible steps from the administration to actually encourage or incentivise the delivery of genuinely affordable housing that's accessible to people of all demographics. So hopefully that's something that the council officers will be able to continue advocating. I know there are many public servants within council who have a more progressive approach to development and design than actual councillors who run the city council, and hopefully over time they'll, they'll win that struggle. But in the meantime, I guess it's good to see these small incremental changes, even though I don't really think they go quite far enough. I might just also, in regards to the, the two other items we're voting on, reiterate my general concerns about outsourcing and privatisation and highlight that if there are ongoing needs that the council is, is paying money for, such as provision of water for industrial uses, it might be better to do more of that in-house rather than going out to private contractors. I noted the comments about how it would be quite expensive for council to get, get its own specialist trucks and its own fleet. There wasn't really much info that I could see about exactly how much that investment would be. I worry that council is simply saying, oh, we'll just keep paying for these specialist trucks and renew the contracts every few years, when it might actually be more cost-effective in the long term to actually buy some of that infrastructure directly and, and do that, more of that work in-house. And maybe it's not, but the point is we haven't... And maybe it's not, but the point is we haven't been given that information to be able to make an informed decision. We're not actually told in detail how much it would actually cost for council to undertake this work in-house on an ongoing basis. And I think perhaps that's a little disappointing and something that we could look at in future, given that we want to have a secure water supply and not be subject to the vagaries of the private market on that front. Thanks.
Thank you councillor three. Further speakers? Lord Mayor, right of reply? No right of reply from the Lord Mayor. Okay, we're putting these in order. With clause A and C, voting on clause A and C together. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. I'll now put clause B. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Thank you. All those in favour of clause C, sorry, my apologies, all those in favour of clause B, please say aye and raise your hands so it can be counted. All those opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Thank you. Any abstentions? No abstentions. Claws.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour and six against.
Thank you. We now move on to the Economic Development and Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee. Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August twenty twenty-one, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Landers, at the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August twenty twenty-one, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Last week's presentation was on the intellectual property protections with the Olympic and the Paralympic logos, something that is very close to the heart of AOC and IOC right across the world. The Olympic brand, in particular the rings, is very popular and of course a very widely known brand throughout the world as well. But that is why the logos, all emblems, mascots and words associated with both the Olympic and the Paralympic Games have intellectual property protections on them. So the Olympic brand itself is protected by legislation which goes much further than conventional consumer protection or trademark laws. Having said this, council has been given permission by the AOC to use their transitional logo with certain approvals in place. And the logo, however, can't be used for commercial reasons, self-promotion or fundraising events. The transitional logo is a temporary branding for Brisbane twenty thirty-two prior to the actual logo that will be created by OCOG, the Olympic Coordinating Organising Committee of the Olympic Games. I'll get it out. So that will be, the one that is currently featured on the council website, Facebook and other accounts is the transitional one, which you may be familiar with. It has the Olympic rings on the left-hand side, the agitos of the Paralympics on the right-hand side and the Queensland underneath in the middle as well. All requests to use the logo can be made to City Communications. So if councillors are interested in the transitional logo, they need to contact City Communications branch within council and then they, as the one-stop shop, will channel that request through to the AOC, who are the body that give the final approval for use. While there's some leniency and inability to please all post within an immediate twenty-four hours following the announcement, now that Brisbane has been named as the host city, we are required to abide by these rules and have signed contracts with the AOC and IOC to that effect. So the reason we brought it to committee was to make sure that the members of the committee are aware of it and I'm hoping that the members of the chamber have now heard loud and clear. Nina Crawford in City Communications is happy to hear from you if you would like to use that transitional logo. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, are there any other speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A and make some comments on the committee presentation. It's only now after council is locked into this contract with the state and federal government for the Olympics that the full details of what's going on will come out. Without question, the Olympics is one of the most proprietary organisations in the world in terms of how it manages its brand, identity and collateral. I'd be interested to know how much, if anything, council had to pay for the use of the transitional logo and if there is any licensing fee attached to its production, either on Brisbane City Council's marketing materials like the website and other devices, or if requests are made by councillors, whether there is a licensing fee attached to the cost of using the transitional logo. So the first thing I'd like to know, which is not disclosed in the report and perhaps anybody who was on the committee could tell me, is what, if any, cost is associated with these logos and whether or not, as councillor Adams very helpfully just told us all, ask City Communications and they'll seek approval for you. Well, I'd like to know whether there's a cost attached to that. The second thing is, it's very clear that it is, when it is set up, it's BOCOG that's going to enter into all of the commercial arrangements with the IOC for the Olympic branding, identity and so forth. And it will be fascinating to understand the cost of all of that as well. I suspect it'll end up being a great state secret and Brisbane ratepayers will never know how many millions and millions of dollars it costs for council to use the logos. So there's one thing that I'll be pursuing over the course of this journey as we head towards the Olympics and that is to identify the actual costs involved to council. At the moment, of course, BOCOG has not been established. Presumably Brisbane City Council will have to then enter into an arrangement with BOCOG to use the official Olympics logos and branding material. And I'm really interested in how much that might be down the track as well. So it's all good for councillor Adams to stand up here and say, you know, we've got these transitional logos, great, let's find out how much, if anything, may cost. But the devil will be in the detail when BOCOG enters into some arrangement with IOC and then we have to negotiate and pay money for the use of the Olympic logo. So I look forward to councillor Adams disclosing those costs in full so the residents of Brisbane know how much the Olympics is actually costing.
Thank you councillor Johnston. Any other speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. We don't pay any fees associated with the transitional logo or any logo going forward. We are the host city. We are the host city of the twenty thirty-two Olympics. We are an Olympic city. So we are able to use the transitional logo as we will be able to use the actual logo when OCOG does make that decision. There will be no cost charged to councillors, but there will also be very often times when you are told no. So be prepared for that as well. Council is the host city, therefore we pay no cost to OCOG. And the reason, as we have heard many times in this place, that it was so enthusiastically embraced for Brisbane to be the host city is that we were doing so many of the works already to become the best city in Australia, so that they thought, of course, it makes sense that we would be the Olympics. So all of the budgeting for the Olympics will be very clear in the budget process. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The motion before us is the committee presentation, item A, the Economic Development and Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, the Transport Committee report.
Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August twenty twenty-one, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Landers at the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August twenty twenty-one, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you Chair. Last week, Transport for Brisbane provided the committee with an update on the impact of COVID nineteen on public transport patronage, which has been an ongoing challenge throughout the pandemic, as all councillors would appreciate. We know that prior to the pandemic, public transport usage in Brisbane was strong with bus patronage particularly increasing year on year and ferry patronage performing very well. Throughout twenty twenty-one, we've seen an overall flatter trend with bus and ferry patronage continuing to slowly recover with an increasing trend. Of course, there has been some dives in patronage numbers that have coincided generally with lockdowns. Before the most recent lockdowns, bus and ferry patronage was sitting around seventy and eighty-seven percent of pre-COVID levels respectively. However, the lockdown related to the Intrapelli cluster has seen some residual effects. Last week, bus patronage was around forty-five percent pre-COVID levels and ferry patronage was reduced to thirty-seven percent of pre-COVID nineteen levels. The good news is that from June twenty nineteen to June twenty twenty-one, seniors' travel on public transport is actually up by twelve percent as a result of the Shrinna Council's commitment to free off-peak travel for seniors. It's the only demographic that is actually catching public transport more now than they were two years ago. Of course, there is some uncertainty around the long-term impacts of COVID nineteen on public transport usage, Chair, and this is largely related to considerations like the continuation of work-from-home arrangements, universities switching to online learning, the return of international students being delayed and changed customer practices like social distancing. That being said, we know that bus transport is generally the most resilient transport mode and will return to higher patronage levels quicker than other types. As buses carry two-thirds of public transport trips in Brisbane, we're hopeful that this will help return the city to normal post-pandemic. Mister Chair, there's been no better time for the Shrinna Council to commit a record investment that we are committing into public transport and we need to do all that we can to encourage people to get back on our buses and ferries and we'll continue to do that. This is why we've recently rolled out the articulated buses on the Blue City Glider route, which was also covered in the presentation. Now, prior to COVID nineteen, the Blue City Glider was experiencing among the highest levels of full standing loads on the network, as you'll know, Chair. City Glider patronage continues to recover from COVID nineteen and what will assist with this is the rollout of articulated buses on this busy route. Now, the rollout started in July and by the end of twenty twenty-one, eighteen articulated buses will be in action on the Glider route. The articulated vehicles will add an additional fifty percent passenger capacity without needing additional trips or additional buses. This equates to approximately thirty-nine additional passengers per trip, ten thousand additional passengers per week and a whopping three point five million additional passenger capacity per year, Chair. So it means less waiting and more comfortable rides, which is particularly important during the pandemic when we are all trying to do our best to socially distance on public transport. Another way we're trying to encourage greater public transport is through the Ferry Network Review. I won't focus too much on this today, considering we've discussed this at length recently, but I wanted to remind all councillors in this place and everyone tuning into the live stream now that the second round of consultation on the Ferry Network Review is now open. It launched yesterday and just like the first round, it has an online survey which anyone in the entire city is welcome to fill in. Everyone, no matter what suburb they're from, has the opportunity to have their, say, online or in person, at any of council's community sessions listed on council's website until the seventeenth of September. Finally, Chair, our record investment in public transport is helping to modernise the fleet and to deliver the City Loop Electric Bus Trial. So far, we've been really pleased with how the trial's going and I just wanted to touch on it today because last week councillor Cassidy tweeted about the electric buses having numerous issues, quote, with doors and exit levers operating in the rain. Of course, as we know, Chair, this was fake news. I want to be clear, this claim is inaccurate. The reported fault was as a result of human error, not an issue with the buses themselves. In relation to the emergency exits, everything functioned as intended. So we look forward to, oh, okay, yep, I hear laughs, laughs from Labour councillors' officers, many of whom have never worked a day in their life and don't understand that operating a bus is actually quite a complicated thing and sometimes mistakes do happen. We are a little bit more forgiving than them on this side of the chamber, Chair. We know that our over two thousand operators do a tremendous job. They won't always get it right. Sometimes they do make mistakes and when that happens, we back them. We don't abuse them on Twitter and we don't have a crack at them because it's a cheap shot, Chair. We actually support our drivers each and every day for the work that they do on the road. So, Chair, you know, we look forward to continuing to assess the electric bus trial on the facts, on the truth of the matter, not on spurious tweets and fake news. I'll leave further debate on the report to the chamber, Chair, but, look, I'd just like to quickly take a moment to mention something that's often been mentioned in this chamber and the media and that is safety using e-mobility devices. I'm very proud of the fact personally, Chair, that our e-mobility strategy and the recent tender process that we have undergone put safety up front. Safety was the number one priority when assessing those tenders. And since our recent contracts with Beam and Neuron came into force, with two thousand e-bikes and eight hundred, sorry, two thousand e-scooters and eight hundred e-bikes, we have seen more than a hundred and twenty thousand e-scooter trips and eighteen thousand five hundred e-bike trips. In fact, these numbers would be even better if it wasn't for the recent lockdowns that we've seen. One user of our shared scooters, user Katie Dibs, recently posted a story about her experience with a Beam scooter on the Brisbane subreddit and it was not without incident and I want to share that story with you today. Shout out to how awesome our city is. Yesterday, Arvo, I was heading to the Botanic Gardens from South Bank and my friend suggested we ride over the Goodwill Bridge on those new Beam scooters. I hadn't ridden one before, but it looked pretty straightforward, so we gave it a crack. Five minutes later, as I crested the hill of the bridge and started to go downhill and pick up speed, I realised that I had no idea how to brake the damn thing. One epic faceplant later, my nose was pissing blood, sorry about that, Chair, and my forehead was swelling up like a water balloon. My friend heard the bang and came back and as she had pulled her head a bit, but in the few minutes that took, that that took, I swear every single person that walked by took a moment to ask if I was okay or if I needed help. Someone called a lifesaver over from South Bank and she and one of the security guards looked after me until the Ambos arrived. I fell right next to the coffee car and the guy there made sure I had napkins for my nose and checked I was all right before he left. Then I had two Austin Ambos who took me to the Royal and the ED team were amazing. They took the time to make sure that they only cut off the clothes they needed, which saved my favourite bra. I know it's unlikely that any of these people will see this post, but I just wanted to put it out there. I'm so grateful to all of them and that I live in a city with people this kind and caring in it, I can only hope to pay it forward if I ever have a chance in the future. I want to thank everyone who stopped to help Katie Dibs and I also hope she's doing very well. Hopefully a few more people will see your post now, Katie, and make sure that the relevant staff at South Bank and the paramedics who assisted you will receive your gratitude. We will certainly pass that on. It's a timely reminder, Chair, to take e-mobility seriously and I remind every councillor in the chamber, no form of transport is without risk. All users should familiarise themselves with the device before jumping on, check the brakes and tyres, watch their speed, use the bell on the device, wear a helmet and definitely don't drink and ride. Our two local operators run free safety how-to-ride sessions, free for any user, and I encourage everyone, a visitor or a local, to take part in this training if you're unsure how to operate an e-scooter before you actually jump on them. So thank you to Katie Dibs for sharing her story. It's a cursory warning and all of us at Brisbane City Council hope that you're getting back on an e-scooter in no time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Further speakers? Councillor three.
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak on the report as well. I would just say it is interesting that apparently neither the state government nor council are collecting hard data on how many accidents there are involving e-scooters. So no one actually knows how many injuries there are that are occurring. Yeah, we had another message to our office just the other day about a woman whose seventy-six year old mum was bowled over by two people riding Beam scooters. They came up behind her and knocked her over and she's been hospitalized, she's lost the use of her arm, she can't change herself anymore, she's needing extensive physiotherapy because some careless riders hit her and we just have no data at all on how often that sort of thing is happening because no one's collecting it. Yeah, I do think that's a concern. Anyway, the report itself, I wanted to particularly speak about the Blue City Glider Service and the transport needs of the western side of West End and councillor Murphy's aware of these issues, but I also particularly wanted to ensure that the Lord Mayor was hearing this directly and highlight that the Blue City Glider was at capacity for quite some time. Finally, council got to the point of agreement with the state government to put on those larger buses and that's great. That's really positive that we managed to secure those larger vehicles, but those larger vehicles are now filling up as well. And the Lord Mayor needs to understand that as we come out of COVID, those large articulated buses are going to be at capacity and we're going to be facing the same issue that we've dealt with over the last few years. And the reality which council's transport planners acknowledged in the committee presentation is that the City Glider route can't really carry many more people. We can make the buses bigger, we've done that. We can make them more frequent, we've done that. They're now running as frequently as every four minutes in peak periods. They're now running as frequently as every four minutes in peak periods, but they're still going to be struggling to carry the volumes of passengers that are commuting in and out of that part of the four-one-on-one postcode. And so what that means is that council needs to be working together with the state government to find other public transport options to move people in and out of the western side of West End. Now, obviously, I've been a strong advocate of an additional City Cat terminal on the western side of West End, and I think that's still an important change that we need to be looking at. We also need improvements to the frequency of the one-nine-two bus service. This service stops outside the Woolworths along Montague Road, it stops... it services both that western side of West End and also Highgate Hill running along Dornock Terrace. It fills an important gap in the transport network, but it doesn't run on weekends, and it doesn't run on weeknights. And really, I think if we're going to be able to address the congestion issues in public transport, capacity issues, both down on the floodplain of West End but also through Highgate Hill, we're going to need improvements to that one-nine-two service. I think for a while now, the council has sort of said, oh, our priority is improving bus services in the outer burbs, and obviously, I don't think it should be an either-or proposition. I think we need service improvements everywhere. But the simple fact is that in that suburb of West End and in the four-one-on-one postcode, public transport usage is incredibly popular, and our buses are literally filling up, and in some cases, people have been left behind at the stops. We need to improve the one-nine-two service, and we need to introduce a City Cat terminal or a ferry terminal for the western side of West End because we can no longer make any further capacity improvements to the Blue City Gliders. We can't put it on more frequently than every four minutes, and we can't put on bigger buses than we've already introduced. So we're kind of running out of options there. Now, I know the council administration is to some extent aware of this issue, but I worry that we're not proactively addressing it now and that very quickly we're going to find ourselves playing catch-up because as more people move into that precinct and as we come out of COVID and there's more demand for public transport in general, we're going to very quickly hit capacity limits on the Blue City Glider Service, and then council's going to have to spend several years playing catch-up, trying to get improvements negotiated with those other services in order to meet that need. So I'm highlighting very clearly to the administration, I want the Lord Mayor to be on clear notice that simply putting bigger buses onto the Blue City Glider Route is unfortunately not enough. There is so much demand for that service that putting on bigger buses alone won't meet it. We need to improve other services that are running through that part of West End and Highgate Hill, and/or we need to introduce a new City Cat terminal to the western side of West End because we simply don't have the room on our existing transport services. This is somewhat of an unusual problem in Brisbane. I know there are lots of services where it's quite rare for them to reach full capacity, but it's pretty common for the Blue City Gliders to feel quite full, and we don't want a situation where patrons are getting left at the stop because the bus was literally too full. It also doesn't make for a positive commuter experience when people feel like they're crammed in like sardines. So let's get ahead of this issue, let's not wait and end up playing catch-up, let's make some tangible improvements to the one-nine-two bus service to increase not only its frequency but its service times. It should be running on weekends. It is an inner-city bus service in one of the highest-density neighbourhoods in the entire state of Queensland. This is a very high-density population, and the idea that people can't catch a bus after seven PM or they can't catch a bus on weekends is kind of laughable. And when you heard our speaker, Mr. Victor Ferris, speak earlier in the public submissions section, he highlighted the traffic concerns with Dornock Terrace. There again, this is the same corridor that the one-nine-two runs down. If we make improvements to the one-nine-two service and give people viable alternatives to drive-in, then we'll be able to get on top of those traffic congestion issues. If we don't improve the one-nine-two service, we're going to continue to see worsening congestion along Dornock Terrace, and the complaints from residents about safety, traffic congestion, et cetera, are only going to continue. So let's get on to it now and improve that one-nine-two service before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sri. Further speakers? Councillor Murphy? No further speakers. The motion before us is item A of the Transport Committee Report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, the Infrastructure Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated held on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August twenty twenty-one, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Wines, seconded by Councillor Landers, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August twenty twenty-one, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Briefly, Mr. Chair, the report presented to the committee last week was on road asset management innovations, and that translated for the room was about sustainability and recycling of materials to make sure that the road assets are made up of up to twenty percent recyclable material. We are working on a whole range of things, whether they be sand made of glass, recycled glass, whether it be recycled road base. Sustainability sits at the heart of what this council is about, what the Shriner Council seeks to achieve. Strong and sustainable uses of all materials is something that I, as Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, would like to champion, that the materials continue to be at a minimum twenty percent recyclable and reused materials, and that's something that we are seeking constant innovation for. So the group heard a whole range of rubbers and glass and a whole range of things that are used in these materials, in our roads and our footpaths, to make sure that the salvageable material is salvaged and used again and again to make our city cleaner and greener for many years to come.
Thank you, Councillor Wines. Is there any debate? The... oh, Councillor Cook.
To Chair, can I ask that items B, C, and D be taken seriadum for voting and debate?
Councillor Cook, you're moving seriadum for items B, C, and D for voting and debate. That's seconded by Councillor Griffith. Oh, my apologies. We can only do it for voting, Councillor Cook, so we'll debate on all items and then vote on B, C, and D separately.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Starting with item B, I'll be speaking on B, C, and D today. The petition requesting council install traffic lights at the intersection of Malloy and Richmond Roads, Mr. Chair, I had to pull up my notes from over twelve months ago when this exact same issue was before this chamber, and here we are again today with no resolution. The same dangers exist, and there has been no action taken by this LMP council. This petition was presented to the chamber back in September twenty twenty, and I have no idea why it has taken so long to return to this place, given it seems the LMP council's position has not changed since the last time we considered this issue. The local councillor for this area, which is located in the Doughboy Ward, is councillor Lisa Atwood, and she has done absolutely nothing to improve the situation despite hundreds of residents petitioning and campaigning for change. In fact, what we see here today, once again, is councillor Atwood taking the LMP party line despite her being well aware of the dangers of this intersection and not sticking up for the residents in her community and their safety. She says this petition response by councillor is fine. She doesn't think there is an issue and supports the fact that there are no plans to install traffic signals or in fact do anything to improve safety at this location. That's for pedestrians, cyclists, or motorists. There is no change from her position last year despite the fact that we have Cannonhill State School, we have St Oliver Plunkett Primary School, Cannonhill Community Kindy, a local swim school, and another local Kindy, all within five hundred metres of this intersection. This intersection has been raised by residents as a concern, as has the pedestrian crossing, some fifteen metres next to it, and we are asking, and the residents of this area and my ward as well, are asking for safety to be put first above the interests of the LMP administration. Sadly, it's not going to happen today or ever, it seems. This intersection and the residents who attend these schools and the Kindy, they've been, I know, have approached councillor Atwood directly for a number last twelve months, and prior to that, they have also run a number of other petitions in relation to this issue. Speeding on Richmond Road has also been raised as an issue, and I just want to also put on the record today that certainly I would support a reduction of speed on Richmond Road, perhaps from the current sixty kilometres an hour to fifty kilometres an hour, and I'd also encourage council to consider supporting that change through the appropriate channels. This might open up opportunities for other improvements along this stretch of road and improved pedestrian crossings at other locations where we do have a very well-utilised park, being Corralgree Park, where improvements are also on the way. I've been regularly raising issues about Richmond Road with council officers and particularly this intersection as well, and in the past, council officers have in fact advised that installing traffic signals at one of the intersections of the more heavily-traffic connecting roads between Winham and Richmond Roads, i.e. Lang Street, Malloy Road, and Newer Street, would provide a safe, fully-controlled pedestrian crossing point. And they've also said that as the intersection of Malloy and Richmond Road is a four-way junction, signals at this location would also provide a safe option for residents in the Catchman area to the south of Richmond Road to turn right or cross Richmond Road. I've put these comments on the record last year when another petition on this same issue came before the chamber. It's interesting to note that the position of council officers in the response today doesn't reflect those previous comments, and I'd be interested in an explanation from the chairs to why that's the case. Councillor Atwood has also put out on social media and into the community that she thinks there should be lights on Richmond Road, but here we are again today with a petition that says council does not support lights. And in the response today, councillor Atwood has said that she in fact does support council's position, that is, she does not support lights at this intersection. So again, what is being put out online and what is out... she's putting out in the community is clearly at odds with what she does in this place, Mr. Chair, and where we vote on these exact issues, and she has the opportunity to put on record her position. Labour has always supported this intersection being upgraded. The only roadblock is this LMP council not funding or supporting it. Labour won't be supporting the petition response because it does not deal with the petitionist's concerns. Council officers themselves have previously acknowledged the enhanced safety traffic lights would bring to this, in their words, "heavily-trafficked intersection," but sadly, no support for any upgrade today. Mr. Chair, we do not support the response in relation to item B. Turning to items C and D, Mr. Chair, Labour will also not be supporting these petition responses either. There were six hundred and six and five hundred and ninety-one signatories on these petitions respectively. One of the petitions was started by myself as local councillor, and the other was started by the East Bicycle User Group, and I want to thank them specifically for their continued support and advocacy in my local area. I certainly value their input and the time they take to consider proposals and priorities in the Morningside Ward and of course across the city to improve safety and the experiences of all road users. The response to these petitions is so... look, it's just so out of touch with the reality of this road, and it's so incredibly disappointing to anyone who has tried to navigate this road by foot, bike, or vehicle. Everyone agrees that the safety issues along this stretch of road and of course the Junction Road roundabout are a fatality waiting to happen, and this LMP council has been on notice for some time now about the dangers along this entire stretch of road and of course the roundabout. Mr. Chair, I can't count the number of times my office or myself have lodged concerns about this section of road and specifically about the roundabout. We are seeing development, and we're going to see more development with the barracks development in the next couple of years, and of course with the Rivermakers precinct, where we are seeing high levels of industrial use. We're also competing with the school, traffic, and concerns around about Marl State High School and Cannonhill Anglican College, and it is residents from across the city that are using this section of road. Again, they are listed and have been listed for a number of years as budget priorities in my local budget submission, but no funding has been allocated. My question again to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee through you, Mr. Chair, would be, we know in the petition response that these are prioritised against city-wide priorities. I would like to know exactly which projects across the city are taking precedence of a similar scale. I admit this is a huge project and a huge undertaking by council, but it is time for this to be considered as a priority. We know that the development are at record levels. We have some of the highest levels of development applications in the city in Morningside Ward, and this precinct in particular is becoming increasingly used by not just vehicles. We have V double trucks using the commercial precinct, we have students trying to ride their bikes. When council has done small minor upgrades along this section of road, particularly over the last twelve months...
I'm sorry, Councillor Cook, your time has expired.
...consultation with the local bicycle user group.
Councillor Cook, your time has expired. Thank you.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you, Councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Wines that the council adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any further speakers on the Infrastructure Committee report? No further speakers. Councillor Wines, further.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a rise to respond to some of the comments around the petitions in particular, and thank councillor Cook for her contributions. Can I please direct the room? There were three petitions she made mention of, and I'll deal with the two that are linked to Litten Road earlier. I just want to point out to both councillor Cook and to the council that the response inside the petitions is not a no, but rather a council has recognised the issue and is considering upgrades, and I'll quote from them. "Upgrade of the roundabout at Litten Road, Junction Road and Combsley Road intersection is identified through the LGIP under reference number MORRI001 within the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-six period. To facilitate this future upgrade, land is being preserved through conditioning adjoining developments as they occur." And in regards to the other note, the petitionist's request to upgrade the roundabout has been noted, and the intersection of Litten, Junction and Combsley Roads is listed in the local government, well, the LGIP, for upgrade between twenty-twenty-one through twenty-six on the same reference, and council is currently investigating options for the purpose of developing a preliminary design to replace the roundabout with traffic signals. So the idea that this council is not paying attention to this intersection is not true. It's wrong. This council, as it says here, is preserving land and doing preliminary designs to a conversion from a roundabout to a set of traffic lights.
Sorry, councillor Cook, point of order.
I'll just claim to be... Mr. Representative, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Noted.
I just think it's important to reflect that the council has a high regard for Litten Road and what's required to do, and that these items have been identified for potential upgrade into the future, and even if you were to drive on Litten Road right now, you would see, or not right now, wait until the evening, because there'll be night works with significant works occurring on Litten Road this evening, and I imagine most of the week, because we take the condition of Litten Road seriously and we'll be continuing to maintain it and looking to improve it. I also want to make mention of some of the comments around councillor Atwood, and I just think it's really sort of sad and unfair of councillor Cook to go councillor Atwood like that, knowing full well that councillor Atwood's on maternity leave and that Billy's only weeks old, and that... knowing full well that councillor Atwood's on maternity leave and that, and that Billy's only weeks old and that, that and what makes it particularly sad is that if anybody had said about councillor Cook, what councillor Cook had said about councillor Atwood, councillor Cook would have been very, very upset. And I just ask her to consider that the standard that she puts onto others is one that she would conduct herself in, I suppose, on, on those sort of matters.
Thank you councillor Wines. Councillor Cook, your claim of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I never said that council had not identified these things. What is specifically asked for and what I spoke about was that they be urgently actioned. And I note that the questions I asked of the Chair weren't responded to. And I'm not sure if that was an oversight or if it does know the answers.
This is a, a misrepresentation.
Councillor Wines, councillor Wines, you need to wait till I've called you on your point of order. Councillor Wines, on your point of order. No? Okay. Thank you councillor Cook. Your point of misrepresentation has been well and truly made. Council, before us, we have items A and E of the Infrastructure Committee report. All those in favour, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. And raise your hands. The ayes have it in relations to item B, C and D. All those in favour, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. Thank you. A division was called on the vote on items B, C and D in the Infrastructure Committee report. All those in favours, please say aye and raise your hands so it can be counted. All opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and seven against.
Thank you. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August, twenty twenty-one be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August, twenty twenty-one be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did want to seek to respond to the, the question that councillor Sri raised earlier specifically related to Brisbane's Future Blueprint and deep planting requirements. So the Plan Your Brisbane project was the largest planning engagement exercise ever undertaken by a local government in Australia. It involved more than two hundred and seventy-seven thousand residents from every suburb across Brisbane and generated more than a hundred thousand contributions. From that, Brisbane's Future Blueprint was developed.
Councillor Johnston. No interruptions please.
From that, Brisbane's Future Blueprint was developed with eight guiding principles and forty action items and specifically principle five, ensure best practice design that complements the character of Brisbane. Councillor Sri would be well aware that amendments to city plan are lengthy and resource intensive exercises that can take between two to three years to progress through council and the state government before they are adopted into the planning scheme. More than eight separate amendment packages have been progressed through council as a result of the blueprint and this in itself is a massive achievement. We saw the ban on townhouses and we also improved car parking rates for developments in the suburbs. In September twenty twenty, we adopted major amendment package E, which increased the minimum dimension for deep planting in multiple dwellings. Where previously this city plan did not specify this requirement, multiple dwelling developments are now required to provide a minimum four metre dimension to ensure deep planting areas are practical and usable and to achieve an overall better design outcome. To answer councillor Sri's question, we have in fact commenced the amendment to increase the requirement for deep planting areas from ten percent to fifteen percent. That package work was commenced within the six month timeframe commitment that was made by the previous Lord Mayor Graham Quirk outlined in the blueprint. The changes to increase deep planting requirements is included within major amendment package L and this package was presented to council on the twenty-sixth of March, two thousand and nineteen to decide to make a major amendment to update design provisions in Brisbane city plan. The resolution was approved and council officers have been working on the amendments, which also includes updates to a range of other residential design and character provisions. You can expect to see major L presented back to council early next year to approve the draft amendments, which will then be sent to the state for their first state interest check and requesting approval to consult with the community. So I hope that provides councillor Sri with a bit of a status report. Now, turning to the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report. Last week, we had a presentation on a development at fifty-eight Morgan Street, Fortitude Valley. The presentation covered a contemporary mid-rise commercial tower on a site next to the one hundred and twenty-four-year-old heritage-listed St Patrick's Church in the heart of Brisbane's Fortitude Valley. The subtropical eight-storey building on the north-east section of the grounds will look to complement the existing heritage church with open archways on the first two levels and an expansive ground level public plaza. It will incorporate a mix of business and professional services, a community care centre, educational facilities, communal rooftop recreation area and great food and beverage offerings. There were several heritage considerations for the development application, including that the development is well separated and maintains existing viewlines to St Patrick's Church from James Street, Fortitude Valley and ensures other important heritage elements of the church, such as the stained glass windows and statutory in front of the church are not unduly impacted. The church is a Queensland heritage place and as such, the Queensland Government State Assessment and Referral Agency has reviewed the development application and is satisfied that it has no impact on the heritage values of St Patrick's Church. This development also has the community in mind. The office space is close to residential areas and key public transport hubs and routes and is expected to sustain about a thousand jobs. It includes an expansive plaza for ground floor activation. Significant trees on the site have been retained and there are improvements of the site through a creative lighting strategy incorporating uplighting on the St Patrick's Church as a showcase. Approval was granted for many reasons and a few of them are, obviously, retention of existing, existing buildings, varied and diverse architecture and that reflects the creative and heritage elements of the site. It's consistent with our green and buildings that breathe objectives. It supports growth and demonstrates balanced social, economic and environmental, environmental outcomes that complement Fortitude Valley's social, cultural and heritage diversity. In the committee, we also resolved a petition requesting the council overturn the development approval of forty-nine to fifty-one Gresham Street, East Brisbane. The petition contains two hundred and eighteen signatures. I note that whilst councils experienced independent officers assessed and approved the application on the twenty-eighth of April this year, that an appeal was lodged against council in the Planning and Environment Court on the twenty-eighth of May. As the matter is before the court and a process underway, it is not appropriate to further comment on or speculate about any outcome. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Allen. Is there any further debate or discussion? No other speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, Chair. Listen, I'd like to move that the item B be listed for, a vote for Sari Adam. Thanks.
Move item B, vote Sari Adam?
Yes, please.
Okay. No other discussion? Councillor Allen? Okay, well now the motion before us are two items. Item A, the committee presentation for city planning and suburban renewal. All those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. On item B, all those in favour, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
A division has been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Class, please ring the bells. Okay. Thank you. Division was called in regard to item B of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. All opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Any abstentions? That was a no. Okay.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and seven against.
Thank you. Councillor Davis, the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, twenty-four August, twenty twenty-one be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of August, twenty twenty-one be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Our committee presentation last week was on the Polara Integrated Open Space Network Plan. In twenty thirteen, council adopted the Lower Oxley Creek South Neighbourhood Plan, which will help guide the development and infrastructure needs for Polara. Polara is one of Brisbane's last greenfield development areas and has seen significant, a significant rate of growth. And as a result of this growth, the L GIP was updated this year to outline the infrastructure needs over the next few years. The L GIP outlines an opportunity to provide future residents with an ecological corridor, parkland and sports park that also address the stormwater and drainage needs for the area. In response to the L GIP, the Lord Mayor's twenty twenty-one budget introduced a new project, Polara Stormwater and Park Infrastructure. The funding in this project is to invest in significant stormwater and park infrastructure in the Polara area. Already, council has been securing land in Polara to establish a corridor from the Polara District Sports Park on Van Deeren Road to the west towards Sweets Road. Council is in the final stages of securing the missing links for this important ecological and recreational corridor. With council's next step to undertake detailed design work for Drainage Works and New Network, I look forward to seeing the outcomes of this investment may only possible by the Shwenna Council. Mr Chair, we also had before the committee the formal naming of Chalk Street Park to Vera Kanali Park. I understand that councillor Hammond engaged with her local community on the park naming and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Davis, further speakers. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. And it was interesting, this presentation came to, to Parks Environment Committee. It was, yeah, very useful presentation, I have a fair bit to say on it. I note that this project has been underway for a number of years and in fact, when I was a representative of Polara, I couldn't get a briefing about it. So it was interesting to have a briefing now about, about this plan that has been developed down there for that community. It's also a bit disappointing that as the local councillor at the time, I couldn't get that briefing. I note that it doesn't show the whole suburb of Polara. It only shows, or only gave us an indication of part of Polara. And specifically, it leaves out the Stockland development, which is a huge development down there and isn't contained in this image. So it is at this stage, we aren't talking about the whole of the suburb. But the, I suppose the presentation for me was concerning and the local councillor was there and we heard from, from the presenter that that council is guiding decisions in relation to the type of sport to be played at the sports park. And I don't think that's something that I have ever been given the opportunity to guide what sport should be played at a, a sports park and I don't necessarily know whether it should be the local councillor's role either. So I just leave that sit, but I, I would think we should be taking that advice from the offices, not from the councillor. Now, there was, there is a lot of substance to this presentation and there are a number of things we agree with. So yes, there is a need for drainage issues down there. It's very low lying. It does flood. Yes, they do need sport and rec and they do need more parkland. So we support that. And yes, the area is growing and very quickly and it was this LMP administration who voted through the changes for this area. And I know when I represented this area and it was largely rural, residents didn't want to see the change that was proposed here. They, they fought it. But they got this. They got significant increase in density. So what this plan does show, and I suppose we've got the picture from two thousand and seventeen and then we've got this other picture from two thousand and twenty-one, that there is massive tree clearing of bushland and koala habitat happening down there at the behest of this council. Massive tree clearing. This is the real story. The Lord Mayor and the LMP aren't telling residents, but it is shown here very clearly in these pictures. Today, even today in our presentation, we heard that thirty percent of our wildlife uses hollows or old growth trees. And yet here, we're removing the trees, just obliterating old growth trees. And it's, it's a real, we had the opportunity of doing something different, doing something amazing down there with retaining our old growth trees and allowing development around it, but we chose the easy way out, the way out for developers. Our way of dating this has been to allow clearing at a massive scale. So Brisbane, unfortunately, even though we say we're a sustainable city, we've allowed massive tree clearing down there and it's still going on and it will go on. Now, I heard the Lord Mayor talk about iconic structures early and he talked about greening the city. This is not how you go about greening the city. Polara is not an example of that. Polara is an example of what developers want to do with this city. And so I think for me, Polara is the opposite. It's the Russ Hins, it's the Joe days, it's the Campbell Newman days of tree clearing. And this Brisbane City Council, this Lord Mayor Shreiner is in his ears, up to his ears in terms of doing the clearing of this area. Now, secondly, the sport and rec land we bought in the Vendira Road is significantly covered with old growth bushland. And all of this has to be cleared. This is old growth bushland that is actually koala habitat. So do we really think we should be clearing sports fields, clearing old growth bushland for, for sports fields? You can't tell me there weren't alternatives. We didn't look for alternatives. We didn't find better ways of doing this. How does this, once again, stack up as a sustainable city? This is where we're building, this is where we're putting in new residents. How does this possibly stack up with our message of being a sustainable administration? It is a really disappointing outcome, I, I believe, for the city, for Polara and for, for what we really stand for. Finally, I did ask the councillor for just an update in terms of the bushland levy and I'm hoping councillor Davis can at some stage just explain the changes to the bushland levy or bushland report in relation to what the auditor had recommended. I know she had the intention of doing that. And finally, the last thing that's missing from this that the local councillor and the LMP won't talk about is there's still no library. They're getting parkland, they're getting waterways, but this is the only ward without a library. And these residents are missing out really significantly because they aren't being represented properly by their local councillor. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And once again, we have those on the opposite side trying to rewrite history and coming out with personal attacks and all smears, no ideas. It is clearly obvious that the, those on the other side are forgetting how Polara came to be developed. It was as a result of former state Labor Premier Anna Bly declaring it a greenfield site ripe for development for six to ten thousand homes. And she referred to it as the Oxley Wedge. Look it up. I'm sure Dr Google might help you with that research because clearly you've been here long enough and you should know and remember that that is the case. That is why the entire suburb of Polara commenced going through this neighbourhood planning process. And let's be clear that the development that went through with that neighbourhood plan went to the Labor State Government for verification under the state planning legislation. So you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't cast dispersions over the LMP administration and council when it is your state Labor mates down in George Street that have had a hand in this all. state Labor mates down in George Street that have had a hand in this all the way through. But let me say that their hand in this was to determine that that area was to be developed. Our focus has to be, has been to support the process through in an orderly way and in a way that we are looking to ensure that the services that are there are delivered for the residents coming in. Now, when we're talking about four and a half thousand blocks in the last couple of years in that precinct, that is a significant amount of people that are coming in. And day to day, week to week, the topography of that landscape is changing as more houses are being built, as more people are moving in. And what this presentation did was actually explain how the council officers have been working across multiple divisions in a collaborative way to ensure that we address many things, such as running the pedestrian and bikeways, pedestrian walkways and bikeways through the actual local access corridor parks that run along that complete spine of all of the blocks that are highlighted in that particular map, which then join to the Veed Road Park and the Polara Parklands on Brookbent Road, which is why that is not on there, because that is already done. And it doesn't need any more enhancement, because there is the walkways, there is the parkland, there is the natural waterway channels, and it is already in place. But that is what the councillor for Maruka doesn't seem to grasp. It's not about excluding part of Polara. It is about connecting to that other part that already has these sort of enhancements in place. What the presentation was actually about was the forward thinking of the council officers. It has been their planning process that they have been working on for a number of years. And I have met them on site to walk through what their plans are so that we could go out there and ground truth it. And I'm sure if the councillor for Maruka had actually taken the time to go out and see Van Deeren Road, which I'm I'm pretty sure he's not very well accustomed to, even though he had it in his ward for four years, he would actually see that there is a great expanse of green space that is not heavily treed. You go onto Van Deeren Road, and I challenge any councillor, any resident to drive up Van Deeren Road, and you will see on your right hand side, if you're coming from Ritchie Road, that there are bollards up along the extent of the roadway, and there is green open space, not a heavily treed area like the councillor over there wants people to be fooled into believing. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not going to let your fairy tales get in the way of the facts. The facts are about what this is about, and let's talk facts.
Point of order to you councillor Strunk.
Will councillor Owen take a question?
councillor Owen, will you take a question from councillor Strunk?
Not right now, thank you.
Thank you.
So when we're talking about what is going in, we are talking about nine hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars for shared bike paths and pedestrian walkways from Veed Road Park all the way up to Craft Road, which is the area that they have been working on the acquisitions from. There is also four million one hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars for local access corridor parks, and that will take into account many of the natural channels and the wetlands, and also help to specifically preserve the remnant vegetation and the high ecological value vegetation along that corridor. And this is why it has been so important to have the people from the different areas of council working collaboratively, because they are looking at all these different ways to manage this. Now, I have another big corridor in my ward from a waterway perspective, and that is Sheep Station Gully, and it comes into Polara from the other end. And there's been different approaches that have been applied across the years, and it was really wonderful to actually meet the officers on site and talk through their strategies for how we can get a modern day approach to this, because they're looking at doing many natural channels, combining it with traditional stormwater culverts and pipes and with the wetlands, the natural wetlands. So there is nineteen million nine hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and six dollars committed for that to really work towards a positive outcome for that community. So at the present time, there are still some acquisitions that are required for the future Polara sports fields, and that will benefit many different cultures that are residing within Polara and are moving into Polara. And the twisted interpretation that the councillor for Maruka seems to have about what the council officers said is, I have been providing feedback from my constituents as to what they would like to see as far as sporting facilities in the growing suburb of Polara. So for him to infer it has been anything but a feedback process is incorrect and completely out of line. So one thing that is so important, and when we did the bike safety review with the council officers, one of the things that I raised with them as a matter of concern was making sure that when we implemented bikeways through that corridor, that we did so in a very safe manner. And by putting these shared pathways and bikeways through the recreational corridor, this is going to be mean that there is going to be a nearly continuous bikeway from the Stockland Estate all the way up to Polara State School, so that the children are not having to go on to the main corridor of Ritchie Road until they get almost to the school gate. So there is just that last little trek when they reach the end of De Vries Road, where they will actually be travelling up Ritchie Road, and there is already a significant footpath there for them to to travel. But this is what we're trying to do, we're trying to look at ways that we can promote active and healthy lifestyle, active travel to school, and safer routes to school by using these methodologies. So I say to thank you to all the council officers working so diligently behind the scenes to try to get a collaborative approach and get this right, so we can make the suburbs of tomorrow even better than the suburbs of today.
Thank you. councillor Owen, further speakers, councillor Strunk. councillor Johnson, you don't have the call.
Thank you, Chair. Listen, before I commence my comments, I just want to make an observation regards to this this open space network plan. It was a presentation in in the in the committee, and unfortunately, I'm not a member of that committee, and I did have other duties at that time. And unfortunately, of course, we have to totally rely upon the presentation pack that's given and and some and some information from my colleagues who who sit in that committee as well. But unfortunately, of course, there is no minutes for any committee meeting, so any other councillor who wants to actually see what was actually verbally said, there's no recording, whether it be written or or electronic. So I just wanted to preface that. So in regards to the the network plan, I was interested when I saw it come into the into the into the papers, and so I followed up on that and asked for a copy of the of the of the presentation. Really, it's it's a tale of, for me, it's a tale of two wards. The ward that I represent, which is Forest Lake, and the ward of Callum Vale now, that councillor Owen represents. And I say that simply because it's it's, what's happened here is, you know, if it's an L M P ward, you sort of get a lot more infrastructure and and other and other items, you know, and and you get a plan, and you actually get a plan, right? Now, I know it started back supposedly in two thousand and seventeen, right? But let's put some context into this as well. Yes, Anna Bly designated it, but Campbell Newman could have just said, no, we're not doing it, right? Not action, withdraw it. So listen, let's just, let's be clear, right? He was the premier, and and if you went to him and said, no, that's just too many, we want to do something else, I'm sure he would have recalled it, as as state governments can do. I think, I think, of course, it it was a greenfield site that probably definitely needed to be developed, and they put a plan in place, which you never, we never had a plan for Duandala, and we still don't. We never had a plan from Ellingrove, and we still don't, and Richland's an absolute, I could use that S word, but I won't.
Point of order, Chair. councillor Strunk.
Interjections from the other side of the room, I'd ask you to call the councillors to order.
Could the speaker be heard in silence, please, for all sides?
Thank you, Chair. So we have, I have, I have three, three suburbs in my ward that were greenfield sites at back in, back in the day, and they have all been developed very, very badly.
councillor Strunk, can you point to where in the report the the suburbs are mentioned? Can you point to where in this report the suburbs you're talking about are mentioned?
Well, I was, I was, I I believe you allowed councillor Owen some degree of of space in this area and what she talked about, so I would hope that I would.
Specific to Polara, councillor Strunk, I bring you back to the report.
I will come back to the report, yes. So the the presentation, it was in regards to the plan for this for Polara, and and I was really interested in what the significant progresses are, progress are, so far down the, so far down the road here, simply because none of these progresses or significant progress that's been made in the summary, right, were ever undertaken in in my ward for those greenfield sites. And if we have a look at, I don't know what the neighbourhood, the neighbourhood plan for Polara was, I haven't actually physically seen that, but I know if it was anything like those suburbs that I that I that I I mentioned, right, they weren't followed. The neighbourhood plans were, were just weren't followed. So I just hope that Polara neighbourhood plan's being followed, right? Because certainly, in my ward, neither neither of those other three suburbs were ever followed. So it's it's just, as I say, it's just interesting that an L M P ward seems to get a plan, where when it becomes an L M P ward, it seems to get a plan, and and that plan gets to be followed, and those residents are going to benefit from a, from a plan that's being followed. And but if we have a look at a ward right next to, right on the border of the of Polara and and Duandala, the plan was never, the neighbourhood plan was never followed, and and there wasn't any significant plan for that whole greenfield site. So I just want to finalise my comments there, I think, Chair. And and I, and I do note that the that councillor Griffiths said that that it was, it was a bit strange when I, when I was told that 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 the councillor for Callum Vale was was able to recommend which particular sporting groups or organisations would would be.
Point of order, councillor Davis.
And I'm quoting councillor Griffiths here.
Excuse me, councillor Strunk, please sit while another point of order's been taken.
councillor Strunk could come back to the item in the report, he's gone right off.
I I bring you back to relevance, councillor Strunk, if you can address the report itself, please, in the, I believe, in the. Some of the comments that have been made by others.
Okay. I believe the comments were made by by councillor Owen in the committee room in regards to, she she nodded when the presentation was being undertaken and she was consulted, and those and those words were alluded to in regards to her input in which particular sporting organisations would be, would be using those sort of fields that were being developed. I think, like councillor Griffiths, I think our very good council officers are, have a greater degree of expertise in this area, and I always follow their recommendations. I sometimes make a suggestion, and sometimes that gets followed, but certainly, they have the expertise to decide on which 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 type of organisation or, sorry, which particular sporting sporting group should be considered in regards to new new developments of new sporting fields. And and I think we should always follow our direction, well, not so much direction, but recommendations from council officers, and I think I'll finish my comments there.
That's probably a good idea. Further speakers. councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item A, the committee presentation on the Polara Integrated Open Space Network Plan. And I was, again, delighted to attend in the gallery to watch the Parks, Environment and Sustainability Committee, and state again that I might not be speaking in the meeting right now if I was actually on the committee and could take part in the debate there. But the L M P councillors decided that they would block me from being on that committee.
To the report, please, councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. And that's, this is the report. So the first thing I'd like to acknowledge and thank councillor Owen for really clarifying how the L M P Shwinna Council goes about doing the bidding of the A L P Palache government. She was, she was fascinating in her vocal support for the premier Anastasia Palache. And I just think it was really quite instructive that councillor Owen, councillor Owen was so effusive in saying, look, this was a Labor initiative, and Labor did this, and and now she's taking all the credit, you know, for it, so that that's all fine. But personally speaking, I know that when the L M P councillors have to get down as low as saying, well, Labor did it, so we'll do it too, that the merit and quality of their argument is completely absent, because I don't trust the Labor Party, their planning scheme is just about, is just as bad as councils.
councillor Johnston, can you point to to where the Labor Party is mentioned in this report, please?
Well, the.
Please go to the report.
Yes, yeah, thank you. And the Palache government, as we've heard, is funding all of the initiatives as councillor, well, most of the initiatives as councillor Owen outlined.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
councillor Owen has been interjecting repeatedly, and you're not calling her into line, I'd ask that you treat all councillors fairly in this space.
Can all speakers be heard in silence, please? councillor Johnston.
Yes, so thank you. So the the big issue here is, of course, the neighbourhood plan that did over the residents in this part of Brisbane. And I remember the residents who came forward week after week and spoke in the chamber here or spoke to me at events in our local area, and they were extremely concerned about the level of density that the neighbourhood plan was putting into this very significant environmental area in the south of Brisbane. They were ignored, of course, and and council approved this huge planning scheme, which we've heard today from councillor Owen, who's on a unity ticket with Anastasia Palache, that this is, this is a great initiative. So I I just want to put a couple of things on the on the record about this. Firstly, I don't, I didn't support the neighbourhood plan, and I don't support what's going on here. Putting four and a half thousand residences into a known flooding hotspot is just a future disaster waiting to happen. It is unacceptable to me that both the state government and Brisbane City Council are allowing development in an area where there just should not be development, it just should not be happening. And the fact that this council is going to try and engineer a solution, it will not stop flooding, and it will not stop the heartbreak of those residents down the track. What was really interesting in the presentation was the impact of the development here, and certainly the amount of trees that will be cut down. At no point was there any clarification about how many trees had been cut down already to make way for development, and certainly, there's been no advice provided about how many trees are going to be cut down for future development. Yeah, of course, so councillor Owen thinks this is. So councillor Owen thinks this is a great idea. She thinks, she thinks that this is a brilliant plan, that there's no problem with cutting down old growth habitat, koala habitat for houses. That's a bit of a problem, in my view, from an environmental point of view as well as a flooding point of view. But what brought it into stark contrast was the pictures in the presentation, sort of a before and after shot of how many, how much development was there versus how much there would be. And it showed, oh, thank you so much, councillor Griffiths. And it showed very, very clearly a beautiful, still some buildings, but a fairly limited development footprint in July 2017. When you fast forward to July 2021, I reckon three or four times as much development footprint. So this is all environmental habitat on a floodplain that this council is headlong rushing in to chopping down. It's doing so, as we've heard from councillor Owen, on a unity ticket with the Palache government. Labour's doing it, so we'll do it too. And I can, I can hear, I can hear councillor Adams, the deputy mayor, chirping away over there. I mean, well, I have to thank councillor Owen for being so clear about who started this and why they started it. And, and just, and why she's following along. She thinks Anastasia's doing a great job. I'm sure we're going to see you out there campaigning for Anastasia Palache next time. But anyway, I must thank councillor Owens for that. Sorry, councillor Owen, for that. And look, just to finish up, I was present when the officers, and I think I can only say this, deferred to councillor Owen in the presentation. Now, they very clearly indicated that they were working with councillor Owen, and they would be taking her advice about what was going to happen at the sports fields. Very clearly, that's what the officers said. They looked at councillor Owen, and she's nodding her head away. And I'm sitting there thinking, oh, this is a bit interesting. And, because I thought we actually had a, we had a process by where you had expressions of interest for who got to use sporting fields. That's always the way I've been told that it works. I didn't realise I had the power as a councillor to choose who went onto a sporting field. So it was, yeah, oh, what sport was going to be played there. It was absolutely fascinating presentation. And let me be clear and sum up. I don't think the Palache government's got this right. I don't think that the Shrinna LMP council's got it right by tagging on, claiming, yeah, me too, me too, we can do it. I certainly don't think councillor Owen understands the impact of simply headlong joining on to the ALP. She's the newest sort of faux member of the ALP, I think, out there. And maybe that's her strategy now, her margins down. I don't know. I don't support this much development on the floodplain, and I absolutely do not support trees being cut down for residential development.
Further speakers? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would like to just touch on a few comments on item A, and then talk about the good news of the day, item B. First of all, I thought it interesting that councillor Strunk said that the councils in South East Queensland can overrule the state government on their South East regional plan. I thought that was, I thought, I thought that was very, very entertaining.
Point of order.
I also-
A point of order, councillor Strunk.
Claimed to be misrepresenting.
Noted.
I'm, I'm not sure how, because that's exactly what he said. I also find it very interesting that councillor Strunk, oh my goodness, I've got to stop laughing. Councillor Strunk said that they should always, always, ALP should always follow council officers' representation and support, recommendations, sorry, and support the officers wholly and solely. Well, I find it, I find it really, really interesting when every time I see a petition through, response through, they go against the council officers' recommendations.
Deputy Mayor, please.
Sitting in this place for the last 13 years, I don't know how many times I've seen them vote no against council officers' recommendations. Or if they don't have the courage to actually vote no, they actually stand behind the bars. So I find it very interesting. I look forward so much to your next petition that you put through councillor Strunk and supporting the hardworking, dedicated council officers and this team. Again, councillor Johnson, all I heard from you is a nasty, repetitious, misleading attack on a female councillor on this side. At not one stage.
Point of, point of order, councillor Johnston.
Point of order. Come on, none of that was nasty. None of it was a personal, none of it, none of it was a personal attack.
Councillors, can we please confine our debates to the issues before us and not make any personal observations? And that's true on all sides, please. Thank you. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you. I would like to just say that there should have been a misrepresentation, but I was sitting in the hot desk during this COVID thing, and councillor Owen could not come up. At not one stage, not one stage, did councillor Owen mention Anastasia Palache. Not once. So it was funny that five minutes of that speech was all about her mates down George Street and Anastasia Palache. I'd like to speak on item B. Item B is a wonderful story of the Shrinna administration. Part of the Lutwich neighbourhood plan, there was to be a new park in Lutwich, and we have now delivered. Councillor McLaughlin, I know you're very upset that the boundary changes, and I'm not upset because it's now in the, the Marchant Ward, this beautiful new park in the Lutwich area. I'd like to start by saying Mrs. Canali was an integral member and very significant member of our Italian community. Not only was Mrs. Canali very integral in the part of the All Saints Festival, and I know councillor McLaughlin and, and Tim Nichols, the state member for the area, has been to many of those Three Saints festivals. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, they weren't as big as normal. I've got to scrub up on my Sicilian because it wasn't that, that good. But luckily, I'm a Catholic, so I could follow on what was happening in the service. But the most exciting thing about that service was the Italian community then go down the local streets in all their bright colours, and people go hang out over their balconies, whether it's units or houses in the area, and cheer them on. It's a beautiful festive environment down there when they have the Three Saints festival. The Canali family, and I know Mr. Canali wanted to be here today. The Canali family have had a business in the north side of Brisbane for 60 years. Forty of those years has been in the Lutwich area. The Canali family and, and Mrs. Canali were very generous to our local community and supporting, okay, they are Italian, so it's mostly our soccer clubs, but very strong supporters of our soccer and sports in the area. They were very supportive of the Italian community and also sharing their culture in, in the local area. I'll just say, there was one resident, and also only say their first names, Greg, who is Italian, said no better person deserves the naming of a park and recognitions than Mrs. Vera Canali. Another resident, Grace, said Mrs. Canali was so well-known and well-respected for her kindness, her generosity. She was quite a quiet lady. I didn't have the privilege of meeting her, but I understand she was quite a quiet lady, but would almost give her back shirt for somebody who needed help. I'd also like, like to thank the Windsor Historical Society, who gave some names for us to go out and survey with. Also, the Italian community, of course. There's a big Italian community around there in Lutwich, the Italian and Irish community, actually, in that Lutwich area. So I'd like to thank them for their input. There was names that unfortunately didn't make the shortcut. There was three names put up. But certainly, Mrs. Canali actually won by an outstanding number to be recognised. So I'd like to thank everybody involved, thank everybody who voted and supported the Canali family. And I look forward to the official opening of this beautiful parkland with the Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna on Sunday the 12th of September, where we're having a very small COVID-safe opening at this park to acknowledge the hard work and also the beautiful new green space that is now in Lutwich. Thank you.
Councillor Hammond. Councillor Strunk, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Councillor Hammond said that I made reference to the, to the councils of South East Queensland, which I clearly did not. And I'm really disappointed that she didn't clearly listen to every word that I said more carefully.
No, don't, no debate, thank you. Any further, any further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for councillors participating in the debate. It was really interesting to hear that councillor Griffiths doesn't think that councillors should be consulted about projects that impact their, their wards. And what I can say is that councillor Owen has made-
Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted.
What I would say is that councillor Owen has made very strong representations on behalf of her community to ensure that they get the infrastructure that they need. Councillor Strunk, well, his contribution was interesting, and, you know, not to the committee report. But what I did take away from it is that you're not allowed to nod in committee meetings. Interesting, I think councillor Johnson's contribution. I wondered, Mr. Chair, whether councillor Johnson was flying a little close to misleading the chamber because I'm pretty sure that there was very little chance that councillor Johnson would not speak to this item if she was on the committee. But again, I would like to thank councillors for their participation in the debate.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Councillor Griffiths, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually didn't make any suggestion that councillors shouldn't be providing advice to officers. What I said is they shouldn't be directing.
Thank you. The motion before us is the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. We now move on to the city standards report. Councillor Marks, city standards committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the city standards committee, city standards committee meeting held on Tuesday the 24th of August 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the city standards committee meeting dated Tuesday the 24th of August 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, I just want to start before I go to report answering some questions on notice from this morning's committee meeting. The question was the average length of stay for the, every dog and then regulated dogs in our homes. So from the 1st of July 2019 to the 30th of June 2020, seized dogs was, was an average of 49.39 days, and non-seized were 13.74 days. From the 1st of July 2020 to the 30th of June 2021, the seized dogs was 36.78 days, and non-seized was 8.37 days. Just to clarify, the seized dogs/puppies, it's based on the incoming dogs and includes regulated under investigation as well as declared dogs. We don't have a separate system to separate just for regulated dogs. Now, we did see a decrease in the number of dogs that was taken in in the period of 2021, and that was mainly due to wandering dogs in take. The majority of the stray dogs that are identified are generally identified and reclaimed within two days. For the non-seized dogs, the Animal Rehoming Centre did receive, there was an increase in difficult cases that required additional time and resources for behaviour of, or health needs, and that affected the length of stay in that period. The second question was regarding the costs for the AWLQ, which, to manage the shelter. So from the 18th of April 2021 to the 17th of April 2022, it's 1,567,538 pre-GST. So there's a monthly fee paid of $138,628.17. Now, just keeping in mind that doesn't include costs such as replacement of vet equipment and maintenance and/or improvements of the facilities. And the final question was total number of seized dogs as of the 31st of August. Was it Warrid, there's five, and Willawong, there is 18. So moving on to last week's committee presentation, which was on the electric vehicle within our fleet services. It was all about the truck that we had purchased. And I have to apologize to the officers who managed to work so hard on getting that electric truck out and about. It was actually in the King George Square on the same day that the, the original Chevy, the restored Chevy was also on show. And unfortunately, the truck got no love at the time, and the Chevy got all the, all the credit. So, but the truck is a very welcome addition to our fleet, and we look forward to rolling out more of them as we, as technology permits. There was a petition there regarding to install measures to deter speeding and safe pedestrian path along Pinjara Road. And I'm happy to leave debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Councillor Adamant.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak about item B, a petition requesting council to install measures to deter speeding and a safe pedestrian path on Pinjara Road in my ward. I'm pleased to advise this chamber that not only am I aware of the concerns expressed by residents on Pinjara Road, the Shrinna Council has already initiated a number of measures to help address them. Sorry?
Please continue, councillor Adamant.
I was first contacted by local residents regarding ongoing safety concerns along Pinjara Road in February this year. Excessive speeding was highlighted as the major concern, contributed to by rat-running to avoid congestion along Moghl Road. It's not helped by Google Maps offering Pinjara Road as an option between Bellberry and Kenmore, particularly when there should be no need for anyone other than residents living on that road to divert off Moghl Road between both of those locations. Chair, I arranged a meeting onsite soon after with the delegation of local residents, together with representatives from the Queensland Police Service. Police provided a history of their speed enforcement data, which demonstrated that the road is well-patrolled, and insisted that the current speed limit of 60 kilometres is appropriate for the conditions. It was suggested that more speed limit signage be deployed along Pinjara Road along with the installation of more guideposts. A review of the number of trees that are particularly close to the road towards the western end was undertaken. I referred these suggestions along with a request for a traffic study to council's Transport Network Operations Division. Chair, I'm pleased to advise that the TNO review has been completed, Chair, I'm pleased to advise that the TNO review has been completed and the outcome is that extra and larger speed limit signage has been deployed along Pinjara Road with the intention being to remind and reinforce the legislated speed limit to motorists. The provision for more guideposts and the review of the trees close to the road at the western end of Pinjara Road is currently under investigation by council's PPI West team. I'm pleased to advise the chamber that the Shruna Council in its 2122 budget recognised the need for safety improvements and allocated funding for the installation of a guardrail along a section of Pinjara Road. In addition, I propose allocating funding from my suburban enhancement fund for the provision of a footpath at the top end of Pinjara Road where it meets Mogal Road. This won't be cheap but it will be worth it as it will mean commuters and young mothers pushing prams won't have to walk along the edge of Pinjara Road to get to the nearby bus stop on Mogal Road. Chair, I'm advised that council offices undertook an inspection of Pinjara Road in June to investigate the possible installation of additional street lighting as there is only lighting on average one in five lots. The good news for residents is that council is arranging for Energex to install in total up to 10 lights along Pinjara Road with these works anticipated to be completed by the end of October. We also have an existing footing for a SAM on Pinjara Road opposite number 87. When the SAM was last located at this site, it resulted in an average speed reduction of 11 kilometres an hour. Given that success, I will look to include this site for inclusion on the next rotation of SAMS in my ward. Chair, in conclusion, the concerns raised in this petition were legitimate and I thank the head petitioner, Alana Allman, for her persistence and commitment to having these issues addressed. Equally, I thank the Shruna Council for the manner in which it has responded to ensure improved road safety on Pinjara Road to the benefit of residents in that part of my community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Adaman. Any further speakers? Councillor Marks? Okay. The motion before us is the report of the City Standards Committee Report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee Report, please.
Thank you Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 24th of August 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 24th of August 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you Chair. And just before moving to the report, I would like to update the chamber on the night time economy because I know councillor Cumming always asks about this in committee and so as we heard from the deputy mayor, there was the most amazing night time economy event happening right there in King George Square with our wonderful Brisbane Fashion Festival. And can I just add to the comments of the deputy mayor to say how amazing Lindsay Bennett and his team is to bring this to Brisbane. Lindsay is a local resident of mine and so I've known him for a long time and I know his passion and commitment to fashion, not only in Brisbane but right throughout Queensland. And so I know that it was a major, major event for him to put that on and it was just nothing short of amazing after all of our Covid lockdowns. I'd also like to report to the chamber that some of the businesses within Fortitude Valley particularly and the CBD are doing it very tough because of the most recent lockdowns that we've had but I'm quite looking forward to the fact that now some of those restrictions have eased, we'll be moving forward. I'd also like to just mention that I did attend the Queensland Shakespeare Ensemble at the amphitheatre at Roma Street Parkland on Friday evening where they had an amazing performance of Romeo and Juliet. And I really encourage everyone in the chamber to look at some of these small productions that we have that are just nothing short of amazing and to give a big shout out to the Queensland Shakespeare Ensemble and for the work they did. It was a very enjoyable night and we all sat on the amphitheatre stage and we had the curlers joining us and it was just really wonderful. So I really want to thank them for what they do and I'm looking forward to our night time economy just getting better and better. Moving to the report, we had a wonderful tour of the Museum of Brisbane and Renee Grace, the director of the Museum of Brisbane, led us on that tour of the wonderful new City in the Sun exhibition. The City in the Sun exhibition is a stunning curation that tells the story of Brisbane's subtropical history whilst reimagining our city's subtropical image. Showcasing large scale new contemporary artworks alongside historical imagery, it reveals how Brisbane's history of migration, tourism, climate, environment and geographic location has contributed to the images of a subtropical oasis of leisure and abundance. We had a guided tour of newly commissioned works from local artists Kinley Gray, Christopher Bassi, Laura Patterson, Rachel Sarr, Sam Tupoe, Sebastian Moody, Holly Anderson and Rachel Burke, coupled with works by Gerwin Davies, Michael Zavros, a very interesting painting by Michael Davros, Tracey Moffett, Scott Redford and Olive Ashworth. And we also had a sneak peek at one of the Museum of Brisbane's workshops with the one and only dazzling queen of glitter herself, Rachel Burke. Rachel Burke is famous for her unique fashion designs and has taken the fashion and art world by storm from right here in Brisbane. Rachel designed an extraordinary exhibit for City in the Sun which you can visit any time and thanks to the Museum of Brisbane, you can join Rachel as she shows you how to create your very own sparkling shimmering work of art. City in the Sun is a stunning exhibition and I highly encourage you to visit the Museum of Brisbane and experience the exhibition for yourself and jump online to check out one of the incredible workshops on offer. And on that note Chair, I will recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Any further speakers? No further speakers, we'll move the report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Hung, the Finance and City Governance Committee Report, please.
Thank you Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday 24th of August 2021 be adopted.
Excuse me councillor Hung, your microphone's not on.
Oh, sorry.
Can you start again please?
Yep, sure. Yep, thank you Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday 24th of August 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Hung, seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 24th of August 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate?
Yeah, thank you Mr Chair. Our committee presentation last week was a guide to rate notices for committee members. As councillors, we are the public face of council and residents often ask us questions about rate notices. So it is important that we understand all the elements of a rate notice to allow us to better assist our constituents. There's a lot of information carefully placed into the small rates document, so the presentation was a good chance to go through it in more detail. There were a number of questions asked during the interactive presentation and I think we all learned something that will help us when we next get questions from our residents. Of course, residents can opt to receive their rate notices electronically or by email or be pay view. Currently around 30% of rate payers use the electronic option and it would be great to see this increase further. The easiest way to go paperless is to visit the council website and search email rates. The committee also noted the financial reports for receivables, rates, payables, provisions and mores for the year ended 30th June 2021 and corporate finance were at the meeting to assist and answer any questions from the committee about this report. And before I conclude, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mitchell Petrie who was a member of the audit committee for his service on this committee for more than 10 years. In fact, he started back on 14th July 2008, so it's more than 10 years and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Hung. Any further speakers? Councillor Hung, we'll move the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the notice of motion at item six on the agenda. Councillor Johnson, would you please move the motion?
Yes, thank you Mr Chairman. I move that Brisbane City Council allocates funding from the 2021/22 budget, service 2.1.1.1, operating expense to install zebra crossings or greenwalk signals as appropriate on the uncontrolled and unsafe slip lanes at the intersections of Cornwall Street and Ipswich Road Annerley and Woolangaba, Cracknell Road and Ipswich Road Annerley, Eckeburn Road and Ipswich Road Annerley, South Street and Ipswich Road Annerley.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Griffiths that the Brisbane City Council allocate funding from the 2021/22 budget, service 2.1.1.1, operating expense to install zebra crossings or greenwalk signals as appropriate on the uncontrolled and unsafe slip lanes at the intersections of Cornwall Street and Ipswich Road, Annerley, Woolangaba, three corners and Cracknell Road and Ipswich Road Annerley, one corner and Eckeburn and Ipswich Road Annerley, one corner and South Street and Ipswich Road Annerley, one corner. Is there any debate?
Yes, thank you Mr Chairman. Look, I've moved this motion today because we are about to move into Walking Month for Brisbane in September and Queensland Walks has a very big campaign going on to improve and get more people out walking. To do that safely on busy roads, particularly arterial roads, you need to have safe crossing points. Now Ipswich Road runs through three wards, councillor Griffiths', mine and councillor Shree's. It is an arterial road, it carries over 60,000 vehicles a day. There's been 100 crashes in the past five years, hundreds more near misses, two pedestrian deaths in Annerley at Annerley Junction and one just off Ipswich Road in Venna Road. I note that, you know, when there's an issue in LMP wards, for example the Walter Taylor Bridge where there've been 24 crashes over five years, they get $180 million to fix their intersection. All I'm after here is a few thousand dollars to put in some zebra crossings which I think would be perfect in these locations or greenwalk signals. Ipswich Road is an incredibly busy and dangerous road. It divides the community of Annerley and Maruka and I'm sure councillor Shree will talk about Burandur and Woolangaba. We have many schools along the corridor and we have thousands of children every day crossing these roads. In fact, the pedestrian counts done by the state government last year showed that there are about 10,000 people a day crossing Ipswich Road along the length of the corridor that's been converted into 40 kilometres an hour. It is an extremely busy road. It carries trucks, it's a major bus route, you know, 60,000 vehicles and of course thousands of people crossing the road. Now, at all the corners of these major intersections that are outlined here with Cornwall Street, Cracknell Road, Eckeburn Road and South Street, the slip lanes are uncontrolled. So people take their life in their hands trying to cross the road. Now, of course, the Queensland Road Rules say that cars should give way to pedestrians when they're crossing the road, but when you're coming off an arterial road at 60 kilometres an hour into a side street, you're not giving way to pedestrians. So we need to install the appropriate devices, line markings and warning signage to make it safe for pedestrians to safely cross the road at these four intersections. Now, the reason we know that this is something that our community wants is that council did do the Move Safe report back in 2017 and 2018. And Annerley and Woolangaba were both top 10 suburbs identified by pedestrians for pedestrian safety improvements and all four of these intersections were highlighted on the interactive map, including very clearly Cornwall Street, Cracknell Road and Eckeburn Road. South Street, slightly different, that's been initiative of Yorongga State School to have that signalised for some time. The Yorongga State School catchment is split across Yorongga, Yorongpili and Annerley and we have tried four lights at this intersection previously and this council rejected it. So we know that residents in the area want to see safer pathways to work, to school, to public transport and to their community services and that's just not happening. There's no investment from this administration in pedestrian improvements along Ipswich Road. We know that it was also an outcome recommended in the corridor report two years ago and still council has done nothing to improve pedestrian safety along Ipswich Road. And I note that the Lord Mayor's not here, he's been absent since his report earlier in the day, the deputy mayor's not here, the infrastructure chairman's not here. Oh, sorry, I apologize. Councillor Adams is here, yes councillor Adams is here, but the Lord Mayor's not here, he's MIA. So I'm really concerned that the message is not getting through to the LMP administration that Annerley residents deserve safer pedestrian pathways. Now, we know that there is fat in this LMP budget. Last year, council underspent in the infrastructure portfolio by $20 million. We know that they underspent in walkable Brisbane, oh sorry, we know that they underspent in the public and active transport space by another $40 million. I think I've got those figures right. So there was a significant underspend by this administration, as we heard last week in this chamber. We know that by the time we get to the end of the year, this administration woefully fails to deliver on their budgeted projects. So, knowing that, knowing that this is initiative of Move Safe, knowing that it is Queensland Walks Month, knowing that there have been multiple pedestrian deaths and this is a crash hotspot, I believe that some of the money that the LMP will simply just not spend should be invested into improving these pedestrian points. I suspect that we could do all four of these with zebra crossings for maybe $100, $150,000. I don't think it would take very much, certainly it would be more if greenwalk signals are required. Now Brisbane has another objective in its transport plan which is to create a walkable Brisbane. So not only is this an affordable measure, not only is this a measure that responds to community need, it responds to the accident history, it responds to council's own reports through Move Safe, it also meets the Walkable Brisbane initiative as part of our transport plan. I cannot stand by and watch more people die on roads in Annerley. There have been two on Annerley Junction in the last four years and yes, there's a degree of pedestrian error involved in this and that's why we campaigned very hard to get the speed limit reduced. But I cannot sit by and watch somebody else like Dr Copeland die when we could make these very busy intersections better. The one at Cornwall Street and Ipswich Road services the PA hospital. So we have elderly and sick people trying to cross the road every day outside the PA hospital across an uncontrolled slip lane. The other side of that intersection is shopping centre, Burandur, and there are shops on either corner in my ward and councillor Griffiths' ward. The intersection at Cracknell Road is also a busy hub. This is the intersection that council failed to fund last year and cut the funding for. This is why I had concerns with what was proposed. The design solution did not provide a safe crossing point across Cracknell Road and we have thousands of students every day going to and from. Our ladies, Mary Mack, Yorongga State School and Yorongga High School who use the Cracknell Road intersection and every day children have to cross an uncontrolled and unsafe slip lane. That is just unacceptable. Eckeburn Road and Ipswich Road Annerley, well councillor Griffiths and I know this intersection well. It links a busy shopping hub and it is dead set dangerous to try and get across there because the cars whiz around the corner very quickly. It is a clear missing pedestrian hotspot. And the intersection of South Street and Ipswich Road Annerley would mean that students going to Yorongga State School who live on the eastern side of Ipswich Road in Annerley can get safely across South Street after they've crossed Ipswich Road to get onto the footpath I built with trust funds a few years ago to get themselves up to school. All four of these initiatives would have immediate and direct benefits for residents, students, commuters, the elderly, just everybody in our community. I urge this council to recognise that it must invest more in pedestrian measures to create a walkable Brisbane. The LMP administration simply is not doing enough in this space. It is an objective of this council but we don't see real measures being undertaken to deal with these slip lanes. They have been identified in Move Safe as something that must change and yet we do not see council doing what is necessary. So the motion's been brought forward here today to install a zebra crossing or a green walk signal. In my view, zebra crossings would be fine with the appropriate warning signage. Zebra crossings are extremely common on slip lanes around Brisbane. They're in other places around my ward and in every part of this city.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Griffiths?
Thank you and I think councillor Johnston has covered the majority of the points, I'll just make a few myself. Essentially, I think this is just a common sense motion. Hopefully the administration will support it. It's all about safety. We're just looking at safety, we're looking at getting the balance right for our pedestrians. And that's where, at the moment, I think there's a big discrepancy. We're looking after traffic movement but we're really failing on pedestrian movement and it's not just pedestrian movement, it's about accessibility as well. So I had a meeting with the Braille House up there who raised similar issues there on Ipswich Road. Braille House raised the issues of their residents getting around and across Ipswich Road, very dangerous road and crossing those pedestrian slip lanes is very, very dangerous for someone who's visually impaired. And I thought that what they're saying, what they're asking and what we bleat about what we do, there's a big discrepancy between the two and this should really, this motion is about bringing the words of the administration together with the actions of the administration. That's the same and it's been backed up with my discussions with Annerley traders and with local residents. Many local residents have raised these issues as has Junction Park State School. I just reinforce that these roads split the suburbs, so it's actually like carving the suburbs into little islands. People need to move between those islands and I think this is, we're not asking for anything, we're not asking for anything radical, we're just asking for the basics that would go with increasing traffic. We believe there should be increased safety for people to cross- We, we believe there should be increased safety for people to cross the roads. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Griffiths, further speakers?
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Oh, okay, councillor Hammond?
Thank you Chair, I rise to speak in relation to this motion. There are a few issues in relation, in relation to it, which I would just like to bring to the chamber's attention. As councillors, we may be aware that section 2.1.1.1 of the budget is named Plan and Design the Network. When you look at this programme and some of the work which it funds, as outlined on pages 30 and 31 of the budget, this programme does not fund zebra crossings or green walk signals, which is what we are asked to debate here today. This operation expense relates to staff costs and legal expenses. So I'm unsure which staff or proposed to be, that the Labour and councillor Johnson propose no longer to be employed in, by council to fund these proposed works. As all councillors should be aware, the installation of zebra crossings and green walk signals are determined not by councillors, but by the relevant officers in the Road Network Management Section of council, in accordance with the state guidelines, which all councils must operate under. I also wish to point out that I had to do a quick Google search, because I, as most of you know, a true North Sider, to see where these intersections were and to get a bit of understanding. The intersection of South Street and Ipswich Road appear to be in the Maruka Ward, sorry, Maruka suburb, not Annelie. So I would, I was going to ask, but I was rudely interrupted, if councillor Griffiths, because he has been the councillor for 18 years, could clarify that point? Because on the Google search, it clearly, clearly said Maruka.
No, no, it's, it's, it's not in Maruka Ward.
So in saying this, we cannot support this motion and I move that the motion be put.
Second.
A procedural motion has been moved for the motion be put. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Division, Jonathan, division.
Division's been called by councillor Johnson and councillor Sri, please ring the bells. Councillors, we're voting on the motion, let the motion be put. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 7 against.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, you have five minutes.
Yeah, it's just flashing red.
Yep.
I'm good, yeah, thank you, it's gone green, thank you. Well, firstly, I note that the LNP administration has just used its massive majority to guillotine debate, to stop public debate about pedestrian infrastructure in Annelie. Now, this is an administration that claim they support a transport plan for Brisbane that includes an objective of having a walkable Brisbane. Well, apparently not in Annelie. Because if you put forward a motion in this place for public debate, the LNP will gag it, they'll guillotine it, they'll cut it. They don't want to have anybody with a different opinion other than their own moving motions in this chamber for democratic debate discussion and voting. They just want to use their majority like a giant dictatorship to go bang, no more debate. That is the impact.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Thank you, noted.
I didn't, I didn't mention councillor Hammond at all.
Continue councillor Johnston.
Thank you, but I haven't mentioned councillor Hammond, I'm talking about the LNP very clearly. So that's what the LNP have done. And I know that councillor Sri, because I spoke to him about this amendment, he wanted to speak on this matter. He is a local councillor and has several of these, well, he has one intersection with multiple corners in his ward and I know this is something that he wanted to speak about. So when the Lord Mayor gets up in this chamber from this day forward, if it wasn't clear before and says, no one in the opposition or the independent, they don't have any ideas, they don't have an agenda for the city, he's a hypocrite. Because yes, we do, but the LNP want to vote against even debating it. Now let's be clear what we're debating here today, we're trying to debate before they cut it. Putting in zebra crossings on the side streets of Ipswich Road, Annelie. That's all we're talking about here, some pedestrian improvements of a few thousand dollars. Did the Infrastructure Chairman turn up to the debate? Nah, he's not even here. Did the Public and Active Transport Chairperson stand up and contribute to the debate? Apparently he's on a committee with Queensland Walks and the cyclists and yet he's not even prepared to stand up and speak to this motion, let alone vote in support of better pedestrian infrastructure in Annelie. That's how bereft, bereft of ideas and empathy, our talent, yeah, too, but empathy this group is. If it's in Annelie, no, you can't have it. Not only, no, you can't have it according to councillor Hammond, no, you can't even debate it. That's what the LNP have just done here today. Now, I just think that is truly appalling behaviour. It's 5pm and this administration has clocked off because they don't think they can spend another maybe 10 minutes with councillor Sri speaking for this, 10 minutes so he could say something about pedestrian safety in his ward about a notified motion. This is not something that is trying to disrupt the agenda, it was put on the agenda last week. So let's be clear, the only person who's bothered to speak here today was councillor Hammond from the North Side, who by her own words had to Google where this was because she doesn't even know. So she's the one the LNP have sent out to gag the debate, to oppose pedestrian safety in Annelie and to basically claim we're opposed to it because, you know, she verbalised me a bit, we're going to cut staffing costs. Let's be clear, this administration underspent in these areas of its budget last year by millions and millions of dollars. This administration cannot deliver on its own agenda. There is an alternative agenda. Month after month, I come in here and move, move motions to try and make it safer for residents in Brisbane, particularly in my own ward, but often in areas that impact on other wards and have safety benefits for them. And this LNP administration are so gutless, they don't even want to allow debate. They are so gutless that they won't even vote.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. I'll now put the motion, all those in favour.
Misrepresentation.
Yeah, look, I don't think I can take that claim of misrepresentation as you hadn't spoken councillor Hammond. But the councillor didn't mention councillor Hammond's name. No, I'll, let's, let's move the motion please. I now put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Cassidy, please ring the bells. All those saying aye, please raise your hands.
Aye.
All opposed, please say, raise your hands and say no.
No.
So please count.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being 7 in favour and 16 against.
Thank you, councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Sri, councillor, I'll take councillor Howard first, you're quick, you're quick to your feet.
I was very quick to my feet, I have two petitions, sorry, I have two petitions. One is about safer sidewalks and crossings in Houston and that is on your behalf, I would say. And the other is about hazardous lift placement at Howard Smith Walks.
Thank you, councillors Sri.
Thanks Chair, I've got a couple of petitions for peak hour right hand turn bans beside streets adjoining Gladstone Road.
Thank you, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, I have a petition regarding toilet facilities at Williams Park Runcorn.
Thank you councillor Marks, any further petitions? May I have a petition for receipt of the petitions, a motion for receipt of the petitions, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor's general business. Oh, sorry, before I get to general business, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order?
I have a point of order.
Oh, my apologies councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, just a procedural matter, I just moved that the item that is currently, the motion currently on the table come off the table for debate.
Second. A motion has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk that an item lying on the table be brought forward for debate. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Before we continue, councillor Cassidy, can you just please confirm which motion lying on the table?
From last week regarding locally made buses.
About?
Locally made buses.
Locally made buses, my apologies, okay, okay. So, so the motion before us is to bring forward off the table a motion that was presented last week that is laying on the table for locally made buses. I'll now put that again, all those in favour of bringing it forward, bring off the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division has been called on that by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Thank you, the motion before us is to take off the table a motion lying on the table that locally made buses, the motion is in relation to locally made buses, all in favour of that motion being taken off the table, please say aye.
Aye.
And raise your hands and put them up to be counted. Thank you. All opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Thank you, Clarks.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being 7 in favour and 16 against.
Thank you. General business, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? You're rising to speak on general business, councillor Griffiths. Oh, point of order, sorry.
I had a point of order, but you finished that?
Yep.
Yep, okay, I'd like to move a motion to remove my petition regarding Maruka Bowls Club and not the Lord Mayor and the LNP not demolishing it off the table and to be debated this afternoon.
Okay, all right, a motion has been received to take off the table a motion lying on the table in relation to the demolition of the Maruka Bowls Club. All those in favour of this item being taken off the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Second. A division has been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Griffiths, please ring the bells. Okay, everyone's here. The, the motion is in regard to taking off the table, motion in regard to the Maruka Bowls Club demolition, all those in favour of this coming off the table, please say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being 7 in favour and 16 against.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, general business, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? Nobody getting to their feet, general business.
A point of order. Not, not a matter, a point of order, thanks very much Chair. I move suspension standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion, that Brisbane City Council scraps the Living in Brisbane newsletter.
Second. Councillor Cassidy has moved an urgency motion that we suspend standing orders to allow debate of.
Save the money.
Can you, have you set that around councillor Cassidy?
Yeah, I've just emailed it to the clerks now.
The words are, that Brisbane City Council.
Living in Brisbane newsletter. Yes, that's correct.
And it's been seconded, I'll take that as read. Councillor Cassidy, you have three minutes to establish urgency.
Oh, thanks very much Chair, I, I think this is urgent to deal with now because we have, we have, you know, in good faith, tried to ask the Lord Mayor many questions about this and to have the, have the Lord Mayor justify the misuse of the Living in Brisbane newsletter. We have in the past, we have in the past tried to introduce an advertising code of conduct which protects Living in Brisbane newsletter from political misuse and protects ratepayers from their money being misused politically by this Lord Mayor.
Point of order to you, to you, Mayor.
Urgency, please.
Yep.
Yeah, we want to, thank you very much Chair, I'll take that, we want to urgently deal with this issue because the ratepayers' money is being.
Point of, point of order councillor.
Councillor Cassidy may want to do it urgently, but why is it urgent for now?
Councillor Cassidy, you do need to establish urgency as to why this is necessary here and now.
Trying desperately, Chair, not to be interrupted by the deputy mayor every five seconds on this. It's important to deal with this right now, today, because the Lord Mayor has shown again today, it's important to deal with that we make sure that ratepayers' money is not being misused politically. And we found out today as well that the Lord Mayor, that nothing is immune from this Lord Mayor's grasp or his office. We found out today that he will, he will misuse ratepayers' money to send out personally addressed letters to everyone with dump vouchers at an enormous cost, enormous cost to ratepayers.
Councillor Cassidy, this sounds like a substantive debate, I don't believe you have yet established urgency.
Well, it's important, it's important Chair.
There's a difference between importance and urgency, please establish urgency.
Because this Lord Mayor, week after week, refuses, refuses to do the right thing. So it's again up to this chamber to urgently deal with this today. There's only, only a couple of weeks left of this session of council. We know that this financial year, the Lord Mayor has ramped up the production of this Living in Brisbane newsletter, which will top 21 million copies over this term. And we know, we know councillor Allen said, and he confirmed this, that the only reason that the Lord Mayor's message and Lord Mayor's photo is on the front of those Living in Brisbane newsletters is because his office specifically requests that. And we now, so we now find out that the Lord Mayor can specifically request his face go on any council document and he can request any letter, any direct mail to go out to hundreds of thousands of Brisbane residents promoting himself or his own political. And he can request any letter, any direct mail to go out to hundreds of thousands of Brisbane residents promoting himself for his own political gain. So it's urgent that we deal with this today Chair, because we want to save ratepayers' money. We take the Lord Mayor's point that this $6 million, we have said this $6 million that's being spent on the Living in Brisbane newsletter could be spent much, much more wisely on many other things around the city. So Chair, I think the fact that LMP councillors today...
Point of order to you councillor Tumey.
I'm hearing the word urgent being used a lot, but I'm still not hearing why it's urgent.
Yep. Councillor Cassidy, you do need to establish urgency, why this matter is urgent today.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Sri.
People aren't meant to be calling points of order during urgency motions anyway, so you should stop tolerating all these points of order.
Point of order can be called at any time by councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, look, Living in Brisbane newsletter has been turned into an LMP party political flyer and that needs to stop.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired, councillor Cassidy has moved suspension of standing orders to allow this urgency motion that Living in Brisbane newsletter be scrapped. All those in favour of this matter being urgent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, please say no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk, ring the bells. Thank you, everyone is here. A division was called on this matter being urgent, please, all those who believe this matter to be urgent, please raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Those who believe it not to be urgent, please say no and raise your hands.
Aye.
Are there any abstentions or no abstentions?
Mr Chair, the nos have it, the voting being five in favour and 18 against.
Thank you. We now move to general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result? Can I take that as read? Thank you, general business, councillor Hammond.
I was almost nervous to stand up in case there was another urgency motion. Mr Chair, I rise to speak about my delightful ride with North Bug on Saturday morning with Andrew. I do hear that Andrew hears these reports, so hello Andrew. We had a great ride, I underestimated, sorry, I overestimated my fitness. So I decided we'd go three times as long for our ride than what was previously arranged with Andrew. So Andrew, thank you for your patience. We rode along the new section of road and he did look at the fact that it is designed to approximately go around 30 kilometres an hour along that section. I had had some concerns from local residents about the giveaway sign up near the Aspley Hotel up the northern end of the new bike way or shared roadway. Andrew had a look at that and he said he had no problems with it. So it was great to get one of the local experts, being our North Bug group, out to have a look. Andrew, I did promise you, I did say, after I realised my fitness had dropped a little bit, that I'd be back on my bike. And I'm happy to say that I'll be out doing a ride on Sunday just after our Father's Day breakfast, which I will need to ride off the big cook up that I will be doing. But again, thank you so much Andrew, it was delightful ride, your patience was amazing. And I look forward to letting you know about future rides, thank you.
Thanks councillor Hammond. Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak on the inclusion of trees within new developments and I particularly wanted to highlight these comments for councillor Allen who's the new chair in this space. We heard earlier today the Lord Mayor talk at length about encouraging new developments that have trees on, on the balconies or that have greenery on the building facades and on the roof. And I just wanted to encourage all councillors to do a little bit of your own research and look into why it is that a lot of experts in this space argue that there's a big difference between trees that are located on rooftops or in planter boxes as opposed to trees that are planted in the soil in natural ground. Trees are social organisms, they, they've evolved to be part of complex ecosystems, usually in communities of like species. As such, trees exchange nutrients via their roots and via mycelium fungal networks with other trees from their own species and indeed sometimes with other plants of different species. So trees have evolved to grow and thrive in that kind of environment where they're connected to a web of other living organisms. When property developers or indeed council propose to put trees in concrete planter boxes or in isolated structures, that's cutting them off from the nutrient web and the support networks that other organisms provide to those living organisms. So I, I just want to emphasise for the chamber and particularly for councillor Allen and perhaps for the Lord Mayor if he, if he reads these minutes, that there's a big difference in terms of tree health and in terms of ecosystem services when a tree is chucked into a concrete planter box in isolation as opposed to when the trees are planted in natural ground are able to absorb rainwater and natural minerals from the soil but are also able to connect with other trees via those mycelium fungal networks. I think this is an important distinction that often gets lost when people just talk about how many plants or how many trees can we squeeze onto the balcony of a new development? And this is one of the reasons that council's own definition of deep planting is so specific about the trees being planted in natural ground. Trees are healthier when they're actually in proper soil connected to other living organisms. That's, that's why our city plan is so prescriptive in that sense. There's a big qualitative difference in terms of tree health and amenity and ecosystem services between a tree that's planted in a concrete planter at an elevated level and a tree that's planted in the ground. And particularly in terms of the nutrient inputs that a tree requires. When trees are planted in those planter boxes or they're cut off from other living organisms, they require more fertilising, they require more watering, they require more regular maintenance and they're obviously not able to germinate and reproduce themselves. That's quite different to trees that are planted in, for example, a council park where the trees' roots are able to spread out, to attract nutrients, to exchange nutrients with other flora. And also I would argue they, they provide a better habitat and amenity for native wildlife as well. So, well I think it's really good that we're brought in in that conversation about how to introduce more greenery on new developments, how, how we can get more plants in rooftop gardens, that's all really good stuff. And through you Chair, councillor Allen, I do encourage your administration to continue supporting those ideas, but that should not come at the expense of planting trees at the ground level. And what we're seeing now is some developers saying, hey, we don't have to comply with the minimum deep planting requirements in city plan because we're putting some trees or shrubs on our balconies or on our rooftop. And that's, that's a really important slippage point that we shouldn't fall into. It's nice to have trees on rooftops and it's nice to have trees and plants on balconies, but that's not a genuine substitute for the ecosystem values and amenity values provided by deep planted trees at ground level. They are qualitatively different forms and different features and one cannot be seen as equivalent for the other. So if developers are saying, hey, let me ignore the deep planting minimums because I chucked a tree on the roof, council shouldn't be accepting that, council should be rejecting such proposals because that's not a like for like proposition. And, and I do hope councillor Allen is hearing this loud and clear and will reflect on this and talk to the officers further and indeed seek advice from, from those same experts that council is talking to about habitat and canopy cover. It's great that we're pursuing those goals of increasing canopy cover, it's great that we're aspiring to greener developments, but trees at ground level are still a really important part of that. It's not enough just to chuck a few up on the rooftop and pretend that achieves the same outcome.
Thanks, thanks councillor Sri. Further speakers? Councillor Tumey.
Thanks Chair, I rise just briefly to advise the chamber of a few projects that are happening in the ward. One is the Gresham Street Bridge, Chair, which I'm quite sure you're very, very familiar with. The other is the West Ashgrove VPP, the Naru Devon Hill Stormwater duplication and also the walkable Capera programme. But I specifically wanted to talk about the Gresham Street Bridge. Last week in West Ashgrove, the temporary bridge for the Gresham Street Bridge project went into place. This bridge is, we believe, the first of its kind in Brisbane. To describe the bridge in a very short way, it's a cross between Ikea and Meccano. This bridge turns up on site in six shipping containers and two cranes along with the, with the steady hands assemble the bridge using nuts and bolts. The Lord Mayor came out to see the last beam put into place and we're talking a 33 metre span beam that was lowered into place in less than 10 minutes. It was absolutely fantastic to see. The bridge itself is reusable. At the end of its use and its function, it gets packed up into its six containers and gets shipped off to its next job. It is truly a good example of what the Shriner Council is doing when we reuse infrastructure, something that could be used for the Olympics. We're talking about using, having temporary buildings or portable buildings, this is the kind of structure that we're looking at. Interestingly enough, we've been talking about the Gresham Street Bridge for the last two to two and a half years, it's about that. The community was well aware that the bridge was being replaced and the reasons why, it was a concrete timber bridge, been built in the 1930s, been reinforced a couple of times, pretty much come to the end of its life. To my knowledge, I think it's been flooded maybe half a dozen times, yep, at most. But also on that bridge and more importantly are the services that were actually feeding the old suburb of St John's Wood. So hidden on the underside of that bridge there was gas and water. Now with the new bridge, the new Gresham Street Bridge, we're lifting the deck up that one and a half metres, but more importantly, the services that were on the old Gresham Street Bridge have been relocated. And what we did was we actually buried them under the creek. So the new gas main actually crosses underneath Waterworks Road and then under Inoga Creek and then comes up on the other side, completely encased in stone, never to be disrupted by a creek event again. The same with the water that goes to St John's Wood. Q E U, we worked with Q E U to put the new water main that feeds the suburb 18 metres down below the creek bed. Now, that's an amazing achievement for council. It took us a while to get through it and we went through a few drill bits, but we got there in the end. The power as well that services St John's Wood, there's an 11 kilovolt energex easement that goes, that travels alongside the bridge, that's being relocated to the far side away from the bridge. So if there are any events, the power is completely away from the structure itself and won't, won't be disrupted in any way. I have to admit, I have been really, really impressed with the way that CPO and especially Nab, the project manager looking after it, he's been outstanding and a fantastic communicator on what's going on with the Gresham Street Bridge. It's been a wonderful, wonderful project. The community are well on board with this, yes, they know it was going to be disruptive, yes, they know that traffic lanes were going to be closed on Waterworks Road. Yes, they know that the traffic intersection was going to move, which was a hard one to try and explain without a drawing, but it's all being done and the community, because of the communication from CPO and from Shriner Council, are well aware that this project is being done for their benefit. It's a fantastic project and a great example of what I believe we can do when we put our heads together. There's a lot of problems that this particular piece of infrastructure replacement we were facing, but we've worked it out. I know Chair, you're involved in a lot of that and looking at some of the proposals that were put towards us for a temporary bridge and a temporary structure, keeping in mind that the, the temporary bridge itself has to handle buses, has to handle garbage trucks, had to handle emergency vehicles. It's truly outstanding what we've been able to achieve in such a short time. The one thing that I'm really proud of is that the new Gresham Street Bridge, and I know the new chair from infrastructure, I think we're going to have a drag off to see who's over the bridge first this time. Because I won the Mirabucco race. No, it's not the first time. But it's going to have a minimum life cycle of 100 years. I mean, that is amazing that we can actually put together a structure and it will last at the bare minimum 100 years. Most of my residents that are living in St John's Wood won't even live 100 years, the bridge is going to outlast them. And I know a few of my residents in St John's Wood actually wanted me to bring the bridge forward because they couldn't actually get cranes across the old bridge to renovate their homes because of the old load limiting on the bridge. We did though, councillor Wine should be glad to hear this, we did stress test the, the temporary bridge by moving the 130 ton crane that came in via the golf course back across the bridge on the way out. Because apparently in the old days they used to put elephants on bridges, we had a crane, 130 ton crane, so it worked really well. But that's, that's pretty much for the Gresham Street Bridge. West Ashgrove VPP, as many of the councillors in the chamber would know, West Ashgrove VPP is upgrading the village precinct in West Ashgrove. One of the major problems that West Ashgrove had was with radiated heat. And I know that the council officers have gone out and done a very, very good assessment of what's there and the whole strip is being greamed. And I, one thing that I'm also very proud of is that the officers are using Astralis Flindersia, which is the tree where Ashgrove gets its name from. So we're actually tying the vegetation that's going in to West Ashgrove back to the local area, so I'm really, really proud of that. That project has involved quite a bit because we've had to lift the footpath, we had to lift the curb, because we lift the curb, we had to lift the road. And it was all done to get the grade right so that the cerebral quasi-league across the road from my office can travel down to the, to the community hall and use that facility. And some of those kids are in six wheelers, two four wheelers, so there's a bit of a challenge getting across the road. But it is a fantastic project and I really want to commend Rob who's the manager there for the night works, he's been very accommodating, it's been a fantastic project and it's coming along really, really well. The Naru Devon Hill project is, has been a tricky one. I notice councillor Wine's there with a big smile on his face. Yes, they're very, very big pipes, very, very big pipes. Basically, to put it into a nutshell, there's nine and a half hectare catchment for stormwater that goes into basically a one and a half metre pot. So we've had to duplicate the, the project and the residents are also on board with that. At the moment, we're, we've currently moved out of Tupperlane and we're in Naru itself and the guys are just about to, to close up there when I drove past the other day. Another great project that we're doing to protect people's home and property in that particular area. Lastly, I just want to touch on the walkable Capera programme. Now I know councillor Wine's being the new infrastructure and the former custodian of that area will be very, very interested in this, this little programme. Where we've gone out and identified some streets, some of which you've nominated Chair, for footpaths and we're slowly putting those in. And the wonderful thing about Capera, I'm falling in love with that suburb, it's, it's truly a great suburb. It has bus transport, it has train transport, it sits in between two shopping centres, it is a fantastic little precinct and I'm really, really proud of what we've been able to do there in such a short time such as putting in the additional footpaths, putting shade over those footpaths for tree plantings and really going out there and really making it really nice for the suburb. Additionally councillor Wine, I don't know if you know, we did Dallas Parade up as well, the old skip, it's very Mickey Mouse now and the traders there are absolutely loving it. So that's, that's on the four projects that are happening in the gap ward at the moment and I thank the chamber for their attention, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tumey, great report. Any further general business, councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair.
Time reset, there we are.
Rise to speak about slip lanes in Wollongaburn, this is a topic that I was looking forward to speaking to as part of the general, as part of the notice of motion that we had earlier. But unfortunately the debate was gagged, so I didn't get the opportunity to speak on that motion at that time. I've been quite concerned about... I've been quite concerned about the safety issues arising in regards to quite a few slip lanes around my ward. In particular, there's safety concerns regarding the intersection of Ipswich Road and Stanley Street. One of the slip lines in that precinct is signalised and the other slip lane is not. And that in itself creates a bit of confusion for pedestrians, but the reality is that most motorists don't give way at slip lanes, they simply drive right through them. And this is something that councillor Wines, I'm sure, will get a lot more correspondence about over the next few years, but we basically have a bit of a conflict between how the rules work in theory and how motorists behave in practice. And there are a whole bunch of slip lanes throughout the inner city and particularly in suburbs like Woolangaba where for pedestrians and cyclists to be able to move around the neighbourhood safely and conveniently, cars need to pause at those slip lanes and give way to pedestrians. But the reality is that a lot of motorists simply don't stop and give way. And particularly for people with impaired mobility, people with impaired vision, parents walking around with small kids, these slip lanes can feel really stressful and scary. And I don't want to overhype it, like it's not the apocalypse, but in terms of active transport, this is the low-hanging fruit. This is one of the things we can fix up in our suburbs to make it safer and easier for pedestrians to move around the neighbourhood at fairly low cost. This is the easy stuff in a way. And other cities have already done this and I know that the MUTCD and the state government's new guidelines recommend against slip lanes as a general proposition. Generally speaking, our state government and the road design guidelines are arguing that we shouldn't be installing slip lanes because there's a recognition from the administration at that level that they are hostile to active transport and safety and connectivity. So we're now moving towards a city where we probably won't have as many slip lanes incorporated in new intersection designs, but we're stuck with a lot of these older ones. And to my mind, the simplest and most straightforward solution is to simply put in zebra crossings on these slip lanes to clearly signal to motorists and remind motorists that they are required to give way to pedestrians. That's technically already the legal requirement, but because of the nature of the slip lane, they don't really feel like an intersection where you give way to pedestrians necessarily. And so, as I said, a lot of motorists simply don't give way. There are some intersections, such as the intersection of Ipswich Road and Stanley Street, where there will be so many pedestrians waiting to cross the slip lane, they'll literally be built up, that pedestrians and cyclists actually have to sort of flow back out onto the road while they're waiting to cross. And councillor Wines, if you're ever, through you, Chair, if you're ever driving down Ipswich Road in Pecow in the evening, you'll see this. The traffic islands are just too small now. We've got so many pedestrians moving around past the Gabba Stadium, coming off from the busway, so many cyclists there, so many e-scooters, all queued up on these tiny little slip lanes waiting to cross. And unfortunately, I think part of what's going wrong here is that the officers who are tasked to look at these issues when councils like councillor Johnston and councillor Griffiths and myself raise them, they're coming at it from the congestion reduction unit perspective and their primary motivation is to maintain and improve traffic flow. So they're looking at it through the lens of how can we keep as many cars as possible moving through the intersection. And this is where I think there needs to be a little bit of better communication and collaboration between councillor Murphy's portfolio and councillor Wines' portfolio because this needs to have an active transport focused solution. And rather than these issues being dealt with solely by the congestion reduction unit, who will simply say, oh, we can't put a zebra crossing in, that'll slow down the cars. We need to take an active transport lens, look at this and say, well, actually, in an inner city area like Woolangaba where people are trying to get to the busway, we need to prioritise pedestrian connectivity. And so that means signalling to motorists and reminding them that they're meant to give way. As I said, zebra crossings are the quickest and easiest way to do this. My preference in some cases would be to see these slip lanes closed off altogether. I think they're not entirely necessary and I think the motorists can just wait and wait for the lights, but if the council administration is not minded to close off the slip lanes altogether, the easiest way around is just to put in a bit of white paint and put in a zebra crossing to remind motorists of their legal obligations to give way. I think it's, particularly the example cited earlier of Braille House is a good one. Particularly for people with impaired vision, an unsignalised slip lane is difficult to cross as a creek or a canyon. When there's a high volume of traffic coming, there's really no way to get across. And so unless the cars stop, unless a motorist is good enough to pause and give way, pedestrians can be stuck there waiting for several minutes, sometimes longer, to get across the road. And if you have impaired vision and you can't even see the cars coming, those intersections and slip lane crossings really are terrifying. So it was disappointing that the debate was gagged a little bit earlier. I would really like to see a zebra crossing on that slip lane at the intersection of Ipswich Road and Cornwall Street because it's right next to the PA Hospital and there are a lot of hospital patients trying to cross in that area. I would also like to see zebra crossings put in at the slip lane on the intersection of Stanley Street and Ipswich Road. And more generally, I would like to see a shift in the administration where we as councillors don't have to bring these things to the chamber and take up everyone's time debating it here on the floor in City Hall because the council officers are taking a more active transport-focused approach. They should be working with the councillors and if the councillors are saying, hey, can we make some changes here to prioritise pedestrians at this intersection? That's what the council officers should be doing rather than saying, sorry, our brief is to improve motor vehicle flow. We see where you're coming from, councillor, but we can't slow down the cars because we've been instructed not to, therefore we're not going to make any changes. There needs to be a cultural shift led by councillor Murphy, councillor Wines and the Lord Mayor to tell their own officers, hey, it's okay sometimes to slow down the cars or it's okay to make the motorists wait a little longer because our goal is to prioritise pedestrian safety and connectivity. That's an okay thing to do, but that cultural shift needs to be led by the administration councillors and by the relevant committee chairs because the officers themselves are constrained. They often have a very narrow brief, there's not a lot they can do, but we really need that leadership from the people at the top to shift this because these slip lanes are incredibly dangerous and I do worry that someone's going to get hurt trying to cross one of these. They've technically got right of way, they think they've got right of way, they step out onto the road and then a car shoots through it. It's an accident waiting to happen. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Sri. Any further general business? Councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Chair. As the chamber would know, this weekend, we're getting close to the end of the rugby season. Jeeps have gotten the boys in and the ladies in. Give them heaps, jeeps.
Okay.
Yep. Mr Chair.
Councillor Adams.
Very sorry, but these ladies will be two in a row. Sorry, jeeps.
Okay. All right. Is there any genuine general business? Councillor Sri?
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak about slip lanes in the suburb of Annelie and I also didn't get to speak about this because the motion is guillotined.
Point of order, Mr Chair. You can definitely speak as many times you like a GB, but not on the same topic.
No, this is a different topic.
No, I was very clear that I was speaking about slip lanes in Woolangaba.
And councillor Sri, I allowed you to range outside the suburb of Woolangaba when you're talking about slip lanes earlier. I think you've done your general business for today.
No, Chair, I was quite clear in my previous commentary that I was speaking about slip lanes in Woolangaba and that's how I introduced that topic. I'm now speaking about slip lanes in Annelie. I'm happy to keep my comments quite short, but given that the debate on the motion earlier was guillotined, I do think it's appropriate for the chamber to at least allow me to speak on this topic.
Okay.
I didn't get any goes in the debate.
Councillor Sri, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And I'm sorry that the deputy mayor's feeling impatient, but we could have gotten through this a lot quicker if we hadn't declared the debate, if we hadn't guillotined.
Deputy mayor, please.
If we, yeah, we would have been able to avoid all this if we hadn't guillotined debate earlier.
Point of order, Chair.
So can I ask everyone, please, to allow the speaker to be heard in silence?
Yeah, just on that, I've just heard the deputy mayor call councillor Sri both passive-aggressive and say to him, oh boo hoo, quite loudly. Like, yeah, I just think we could probably have a bit more decorum in here.
I know we're near the end of the session for today, but please show some civility towards your fellow councillors and councillor Sri, you have the floor.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for your indulgence. It was a little disappointing earlier to see that we didn't have a proper discussion about safety in Annelie, but councillor Johnston was right when she said that there are serious concerns along that stretch of Ipswich Road and the intersections mentioned in the notified motion. Although it's well outside my ward, I've had residents from that electorate and that neighbourhood contact my ward office because they're so concerned. They've done the right thing, they've signed their petitions, they've gone to their local councillors, they've raised it directly with the council contact centre and they're not seeing any action. And those particular slip lanes in Annelie are especially dangerous and I think that's a function of that stretch of Ipswich Road feeling like a through corridor and motorists not remembering that they're moving through residential areas. The reality is that if we're trying to shift people out of their cars, if we're trying to reduce traffic congestion, we need to make it easier for people to move safely through their suburbs by walking and by riding, not just in the inner city and not just in my electorate of the Gabba Ward, but in suburbs like Annelie and in suburbs further out. Because residents across the city should feel safe walking through their neighbourhoods. That shouldn't just be a luxury that's reserved for those who are lucky enough to be able to live in the inner city. Everyone deserves to feel safe when they're walking through their local streets, when they're trying to get to the shops, when they're trying to get to the bus stop. And I for one would really like to see those changes made at those intersections around Annelie. There's a few other slip lanes further south, I think into Maruka and Yorongpili as well. I won't list them all individually, I don't want to test the deputy mayor's patience any longer, but I really think this is an important issue and I don't want it to drop off the radar or be dismissed as some kind of party political point-scoring exercise. This isn't about point scoring or party politics, this is about safety. These slip lanes are dangerous. The state government has identified that they are dangerous and recommends against installing them at intersections going forward. We have a legacy problem here of a dangerous intersection design and configuration which does not comply with modern standards. Local councillors have raised those safety concerns, residents have raised those safety concerns. The actual fixes are pretty simple and we can argue the technicalities about which section of the budget the funding should come from and all that sort of stuff. Really, we've got the money there if there's the political will. So ultimately, this is a question of political will. Is this council administration willing to address those safety concerns about those slip lanes in Annelie and other neighbouring suburbs and intersections? And I think it's high time that we did something about this. And if someone is killed or seriously injured at one of those slip lanes again, I'll be the first to stand up here and say, I told you so, because the administration is definitely on notice, it's had plenty of people raising concerns about these issues. They're not safe, they're certainly not accessible, they discourage people from walking through their neighbourhoods and they increase traffic congestion because people choose to drive instead. This is not a good approach for our city.
Thank you, councillor Sri. Is there any other general business? I declare the meeting closed. If anyone hasn't signed the book, please do so. That concludes me.